She got her, she got the solos. That was really cool.
It's ready.
All right, are we at six? Yes, we are. So I will call the regular board meeting of the Temple City Unified School District Board of Education to order at 6:00 P. M. Let me do, um, roll called. Here, there we go. All right. So, um, roll call, I'm here. Uh, member Georgino?
Here.
Member Sneed?
Here.
Member Lynn?
Here.
Member Smith?
Whoa.
Okay, a- and I know Kiana Lee is going to be joining us later. Um, we'll move on to public comment on closed session agenda items. Do we have any public comment for closed session?
No, we don't.
All right. So we'll move on to, um, closed session and in closed session, we will be discussing personnel matters under government code five four nine five seven. Um, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation. Um, under government code five four nine five six dot nine subdivision D four one case. And then we have personnel matters, government code five four nine five seven superintendent's evaluation check-in. Um, all right, so may I have a motion in a second to adjourn to closed session?
Remove.
All right, member Smith and then member Lynn second. And roll call vote, um, I'm a yes. Uh, member Smith?
Yes.
Um, member Lynn?
Yes.
Member Georgino?
Yes.
And member Sneed?
Yes.
All right. Uh, with the five oh vote, we are going to close session. So see you on the other side, guys.
Hi Mary, do you see the prompt to get into closed session? Yeah, it looks, maybe she's having computer problems.
...
... being an uncomfortable, um, or harassing work environment for you and your comments when...
Okay, I think you guys were a couple minutes behind. Do we have Mary? Okay, I think we have everybody.
Mike?
Yeah, we do. We have Kiana. Okay. All right. So it is 7:03. We're convening to open session. Can I get a motion in a second to convene? Do we mean to open, sorry?
I move.
Okay. So we have a motion from member Sneed, a second from, I thought Georgina, member Georgina. Let's go ahead and take a roll call.
If we're going to play a regular season against teams outside of our district, say so.
You might want to mute. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, roll call vote. Member Georgino?
Yes.
Member Sneed?
Yes.
Member Lynn?
Yes.
I'm a yes and member Smith?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we are back in open session. And we will now move on to item number seven, which is announcements that tonight's meeting is being digitally, digitally recorded. And with that, we will move on to number eight, which is pledge of allegiance, which will be led by me. We could place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We'll move on to number nine. We don't have any announcements of actions taken in closed session. We don't have any actions taken in closed session. So we will move on to item number 10, changes to the agenda. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? I think we do. We're going back into closed session after this. So that's the only change that I can think of. It's not even a change, it's just an addition. We can then move on to item number 11, approval of agenda by roll call vote. Can I get a motion in a second?
I move.
I move.
So members, motion by member Smith, second by member Georgino. We'll take the vote, preferential vote from student board member Lee.
Yes.
Okay, member Smith?
Yes.
Member Sneed?
Yes.
Member Lynn?
Yes.
I'm a yes and member Georgino?
Yes.
Okay. All right, before we move on to number 12, I just want to say that at 27A, we'll have a public hearing. So if you have any public comments during that time, you may want to just prepare. In order to make a public comment, you just need to send an email to publiccomment@tcusd.net and put in the subject line "public comment" for 27A, and we will definitely read your comment. All right, with that, we go to our favorite part of this meeting, which is special recognition presentation. I understand we have a presentation from Monica Lukesh on Black History Month. Welcome, Monica.
To be here. Good evening. My name is Monica Lukesh and I get, I'm actually the assistant principal on special assignment overseeing equity outreach and PBIS this year. So it's been, it's been wonderful. And so it's good to be here with you all. Thank you for having me. So on Black History Month in Temple City Unified School District, what does it look like, sound like? Before we begin, there's a, this is a 20-second video. Quick glimpse from our CTA, the CTA president. So I thought I would share this first about Black History Month.
February 1st marks the start of Black History Month, bringing up opportunities for critical reflection and honest conversation with our students about our history and futures. Honor Black History Month and educate and engage students. Black history is American history.
So with that, what I appreciate is the fact that Black History Month is our history month. So why do we celebrate Black History Month is because celebrating it reminds us that it is our history. It also provides an opportunity to highlight the best of Black history and culture. It also honors the historic leaders of the Black community and the sacrifices that they have made and endured to secure their rights and freedoms we enjoy in the present time. To help honor these accomplishments of Black Americans, I will highlight a collection of inspirational and powerful Black History Month activities at each site. Just real quick. These, we, just as a teacher, as an admin in Temple City, we, just so you know, there's a lot happening. And this is just a quick glimpse of what's happening at each site. But yeah, teachers are doing wonderful things. I don't know all of them, but teachers and staff are doing great things. Here are just a few. So at La Rosa, let me, at La Rosa, this is a second grade class and they are practicing their writing skills by researching inspirational, transformational Black leaders. You'll see here Rosa Parks, the student wrote about Rosa Parks. And at Emperor, at Cloverly, this is an example of Mr. Slaymaker's fourth grade class. He actually encourages all of his students to fill out a reading, a Black History Month reading log, where students get a chance to read about uplifting individuals every day. And so it's wonderful to see students being exposed and learning and growing and being challenged by our history. So that's just an example at Cloverly. At Emperor, again, you're going to see students writing, speaking, researching about At Emperor, um, again, you're going to see students writing, speaking, uh, researching about famous, um, and important Black leaders. You, uh, you can't see the image probably very clearly, but I love these pamphlets that they created. Uh, inside the pamphlets, it says, be the change. And you'll see the student with the orange hat. He wrote, um, he talked about Jackie. Um, Jackie played, Rosa sat, Aretha sang, Martin marched, Sojourner spoke, and Malcolm protested. Right? And these are just great examples and reminders, even as teachers, um, as parents of these influential leaders that had to sacrifice so much. Um, at Longdon, we see these beautiful murals. The students work together, um, to create this Black History Month mural. And next to it, you'll see also a quilt. And on this quilt, um, highlights leaders such as Willie Bridges, Ray Charles, Thurgood Marshall, so many more. And I love that you see the different colors, the different writing styles. Um, and it really just brings all of the students from different, um, classes, um, together as like a quilt. And I love that image. Cause our country is like a quilt, a beautiful, um, sometimes snagged quilt. Um, and so I love that image. At Oak, um, Oak has an equity committee that works closely with ASB as well to honor and celebrate that Black History Month in a variety of ways, of fun ways, actually. Some of the fun ways that they are celebrating and honoring it is through daily bulletin facts to celebrate. Um, that Mr. Lessin reads every day. They actually also have a writing contest. You'll see here, um, inspired by Amanda Gorman. And, um, we have ASB, uh, who, uh, host a Black History Month trivia at lunch. And of course, there's marquee posts and ASB created posters. And with the help of wonderful Jeanette Johnson, um, she has created a space in the library where students can access a variety of um, books and resources where they can learn more and be inspired and challenged at the same time. So that's what's happening at Oak. So many good things. And at Temple City and the Dr. Beck Sears Learning Center, um, at Temple City, every day there are inspirational quotes shared during the school-wide announcements and also on Parent Square. One of, um, one of the first announcements I, I put here was February third, um, sharing that February is Black History Month. February fourth is actually Rosa Parks' birthday. And one of the most well-known and popular quotes from her is, "You must never be fearful about what you are doing when it is right." And so that's one way. And of course, we know, um, as a, as a teacher, high school teacher, um, many years ago, I was very intentional to also integrate that, even in my Spanish class. How can I integrate Black history? Um, in Espanol. And so know that teachers are doing this across the board. Uh, and of course, Principal Westgate shared with us, um, some meaningful videos, uh, to his staff um, that, so they can share with students. So not just videos to share, but also resources. Um, and I just really appreciate the intentionality from our, our school administrators uh, to, to find meaningful and valuable resources to share. So these are just a glimpse of the ways that Temple City Unified and our teachers and our staff and our administrators are being intentional um, about sharing more about Black history and the challenges that comes with that and having hard conversations and leaning in to some of those really hard conversations that are so healthy and so needed right now. And so, um, that's just a glimpse and I just wanted to share that with you and and I wish I could, man, I could take up the entire board meeting, I'm sure, sharing all the things that teachers are doing, but I'm not going to do that because I think you all want to go to bed at some point. So thank you for having me and I, I hope this was helpful.
Actually done.
Yes, thank you so much, Monica, for coming and for sharing all the great work being done at all the schools. Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Does anybody have any questions for Monica?
I just, I really appreciate, uh, all the work you put into this and, uh, it's great to see what's going on across the district. Yeah, is there a new baby yet? Is there a new baby yet?
Oh, sorry, my internet's really bad. No new baby yet. I'm thirty-eight weeks. And I am actually having some contractions. So it's going to come anytime. Family of four, coming right up.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for all your work that you put into this, Monica.
Of course, thank you all.
All right, we will move on to item number thirteen. Public comment on agendized and non-agendized items. Do we have any public comment, Marie?
Just the one I sent you.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
But actually, Melissa?
It's in written communication, right?
No, he's actually on the, he, he joined the meeting, uh, Mr. Kobayashi, so I'm not sure if he would rather just speak his public comment or you read it.
You could just read it on our behalf.
Okay, one second. All right, so we have, um, a letter from the uh, Temple City National Little League and it stated February twenty-second. Dear Honorable TCUSD Board Members, thank you for your continued service to our community and for all that you do for our children, families, faculty and staff. On behalf of Temple City National Little League's Board of Directors, I'm appealing to you to request that our league be permitted to utilize the restroom facilities that are located on the grounds of the Milham Field on the, on the campus of Longdon Elementary. TCNLL has been continually advised by TCUSD's Risk Management Department that the use of the restroom by outside organizations is currently prohibited due to COVID nineteen protocols. TCNLL has been abiding by TCUSD's directives since the commencement of practices for our spring twenty twenty-two season and the protocols were reconfirmed during a teleconference held with TCUSD Risk Management and City of Temple City on February eleventh, twenty twenty-two. However, TCNLL has recently inquired if reopening protocols for K through twelve schools, um, appendix T one and protocols for organized youth sports appendix S were updated and issued on tw- two seventeen twenty-two. And TCNLL was advised today via telephone by TCUSD Risk Management that the new guidelines are currently being reviewed, but the restrictions on the use of the restroom by outside organizations currently remains in place. Our league will be entering our sixty-seventh year this season with young children and families of our community with over a hundred and sixty families participating in our league this year. We anticipate an opening night ceremonies crowd of nearly five hundred people on Friday, March fourth. TCNLL is currently exploring alternative options for restroom facilities with the city, but those options may be cost prohibitive to our league as a five oh one C three nonprofit organization. The City of Temple City has deferred any restrictions of TCNLL's usage agreement with Milham Field to TCUSD. TCNLL uh, would like to respectfully request that the TCUSD School Board immediately permit our organization, our organization to utilize the restroom facilities at Milham Fields for the spring twenty twenty-two season. TCNLL will be responsible for any fees outside of TCNLL's facility use permit with the City of Temple City for custodial staff needed to perform the minimum cleaning of the restrooms on requested Saturdays. We continue to understand that ever-evolving challenges that are occurring during, occurring due to the pandemic in our league can only respectfully request that the school district assist our league in granting us access to utilize the restroom facilities that are designated for Milham Field. Thank you in advance for your assistance and attendance to this matter, respectfully, Billy Kobayashi. TCNLL President. All right, thank you so much for that. Um, and, um, I guess, Kim, did you want to, we could just look into this further? Maybe?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great. Okay, so that was public comments. So we are moving on to community, item number fourteen, community update by Board President. Okay, that's item number fourteen. Um, I have a couple, but I, I, I'll ask at the end if anybody else, um, any other board member has anything. Um, so the city posted on February seventh vaccination rates for our community. I just wanted to share them. Um, as of the seventh of February, eighty-three percent of residents age five and above um, are vaccinated and fifty percent of Temple City residents ages twelve and above are boosted. So we just encourage our community to can, you know, to get vaccinated and boosted so we can continue to keep everybody safe. Um, next we have, um, testing continues at Temple City Park on Thursdays, um, with, from eight to four P M. That's being done by the County Sheriff's Department. And at the district on Tuesdays and Thursdays for staff and students, um, from two to six P M. Then we have the Camellia Festival, who's there looking for anyone interested in participating in the festival and they have, um, information on their website, camelliafestival.org. Um, so check that out. And then, um, the Temple City High School announced the production that they will be performing for our Performing Arts Week at the Playhouse and it's Annie Junior. Auditions for the play are this week, Wednesday and Thursday for high school students. Um, we really do need support of, of the week of the performing arts events. Uh, there will be, you know, dance, cheer, auxiliary, uh, vocal arts band and orchestra performances. Um, there'll be a lobby displaying visual arts of our high school students. Um, and a performance by our drama team and the final night will be Annie Junior Musical. So any support you can provide, uh, whether it be donation, volunteering to chaperones or other volunteers needs that, that are there, um, or buy a ticket to attend. Um, any of the performances or all of them. Um, it's definitely, you know, a week that's guaranteed to lift the spirits, um, and of our community and, you know, feel that sense of community that we've needed for a long time since the pandemic started. So those are the updates that I had. Does any other board member have any updates? Okay.
Melissa?
Yes.
Oh, I just wanted to add on to your comments about the Camellia Festival. Um, March seventh is the deadline for first graders to apply, uh, for the Royal Court, um, register to be, go to the play day. So if anyone out there has a first grader who would be interested in coming to the play day and possibly being on the Royal Court, um, please check the website.
Thank you, Donna. Anyone else? Matt?
Actually, I'm sorry, I got distracted for just a minute, but I don't know if you mentioned the Harlem Wizards event coming up in April, did you?
No, I did not.
Okay, so on the twenty-fourth of April, um, the Harlem Wizards are coming to Temple City. They're going to be playing basketball with the Oak Avenue staff at the high school gym. And it sounds like it's going to be a great fundraising event. And, uh, tickets are fifteen bucks in advance for adults and eighteen dollars at the door. And you can make reservations for reserved seating and whatnot, too.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, we will move on to item number fifteen, which is district updates. We can start with, um, business services. Connie, what do you have for us?
Yes, good evening, Board of Presidents, Espinoza. And first of all, I want to take this opportunity to thank the entire Food Service Department staff from a cafeteria manager, staff and the director, Marisol Cortez, for their dedication and a commitment to serve our students each day. Like most of other schools in the region, our Food Service Department continued to experience a food distribution challenge, including, but not limited to, ordered items are not available, delivery delayed. Sometime our director has personally go to the grocery store, pick up an item and it delivered to the school side. I also want to thank the students, parents and aside administrators for your patient support to our program. If you have any question about our program, please contact either our dish office director or side cafeteria manager. Yeah, welcome to email me directly also. Second of all, I want to let a board know that, uh, um, we are very diligent in working our secondary reported budget. And we, uh, plan to submit a board, um, next board meeting so that we can send it to the Lego, um, before deadline, which is March seventeen. Hopefully that we will, um, present a better result than first entry report. That is the end of my report today. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. All right, moving on to educational services. Chris?
All right, good evening, everybody. Um, I'm sorry about the lighting. Um, I'm having some signal issues in my offices and this is the only place where my, can, put my computer and get stable signal. So, um, I just have a few things to talk about from educational services. As you know, from our last board meeting, um, we are currently in the second of our two pilots in our math textbook adoption. So our teachers went through the, the training session and it really, it went really well. And we're very fortunate to have such dedicated teachers to, with their willingness to put in that, that extra time to make sure they're prepared for the adoption, the pilot, excuse me. Um, so we're, we will be conducting that pilot until April fifteenth. And following that, the math committee will evaluate both of the programs, the, the curriculum and make a recommendation. So we're looking forward to the completion of this stage in our process. Um, we are now going to be in working with Amy Gerling and Scott Sherman, working with our site principals. They're going to be reaching out so that the principals will have conversations with their, each of their staffs to talk about what we believe is where the need exists in our district from a site level on where we're going with our professional development in next year. So they're going to be working with each of those sites to, we can get some really good ideas coming from our teachers and our staff members. Um, we just completed our eye-ready winter diagnostic. Um, and I just want to commend all of our hardworking teachers and staff members for making sure to get through with this process. That's so very important to us at our schools to know where our students are and their learning. Um, I would tell you the results that have come in, they just show how dedicated our teachers are and how much they've, just knowing how much our teachers have gone through, both last year, but, but also this year, our teachers and our staff members. Um, in many ways, this school year has been even more challenging than the last school year. And for us to still be able with all of the challenges, um, to push through and, and complete this process and be able to gather this data, um, and the scores that are resulting, showing how much work is being put in in the classroom. Um, I can just say thank you to our teachers, um, and to our families for supporting their kids and doing their, their eye-ready work at home when they have that chance. But, um, we're very fortunate. And I would say that's all I have right now from educational services this week. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. We'll move on to human resources. Uh, Tamara, what do you have for us today?
All right, good evening, Board of Education. I'm going to kind of follow with the, uh, thank you train of, um, thanking our TCEA negotiations team as well as our district negotiations team. We had a long day of negotiations today. So thank you so much for your continued collaboration, transparency. Um, and we know that the, we are one team and we continue using that verbiage that we're one and we're going to make it through and we're going to do good things. So I appreciate you guys. Um, next, we just submitted our Laco district salary survey. This is done once a year. So we just completed that and send it through. One more check off. And then last but not least, the COVID leave, a Senate Bill one one four was just passed by our governor on February tenth and it began February twentieth. Um, this will allow up to eighty hours of COVID leave for our employees. Um, and it is retroactive to January first. So that information went out to our employees today. And that is it for human resources.
All right, well, thank you so much, Tamara. Next, we have student services slash student discipline update. Chris, you are back up.
Hello again.
I'm no C.
That's right. Um, with, uh, with student discipline, uh, based on the reports that we've received from our site leadership, there's, there are minor incidents that take place. There's, there's no one that's going to pretend that we don't have some student behavioral issues. But I have not received any reports of major student issues. Um, to be honest with you, since we returned from Christmas break. Now, the, the month of January was so challenging on our campuses with the Omicron surge and the protocols that we had to follow. And so I'm not trying to pretend And so I'm not trying to pretend that, that the level of stress wasn't extremely high on our campuses for sure. But that being said, we weren't seeing the same level of students incidents on a major scale, what we would call. Um, O D Rs at elementary schools or, um, a sort of discipline infractions, uh, in our system. And so. We've just seen an, an improvement in behaviors, not to try to, to jinx anything. Um, we have continued to see at a slower pace, but we're continuing to see, uh, student. A wellness issues that have come up that our counseling teams have needed to be there to support students with. So. Just as the counseling teams presented at our last board meeting. We have, it's not at the same pace, but we are continuing to see, which we're not surprised by because we all know. How much stress our students have been through and how in-person learning has brought its own set of challenges. Um, and so we are continuing to work together with our counseling teams, um, in our counseling meetings on a monthly basis. Um, and in some other areas which I'll address later in our meeting, um, to continue to try to meet this need that exists on all of our campuses. Um, I had the, the pleasure and honor of on Friday traveling to Adelanto near Victorville. To watch our boys soccer team defeat, um, Adelanto High School two to one to advance to the semifinals yesterday. I'll just say it wasn't even that close. Our team was amazing. Um, this is really a special group of kids with some serious skills. I'm just going to put it out there. Not to jinx it, but they, uh, they won again yesterday and we all know on Saturday they play at home at five o'clock. At Temple City High School for the C I F Southern Section Championship and, uh, we're all going to be there and we're all very, very excited by that. Um, tonight, the girls are playing in the semifinals, girls' basketball, playing at home at Temple City High School. I'm surprised I don't at least see one of you with that backdrop. Going around in the background. Um, the update I got from. The assistant principal Ben Nguyen, at the end of the first quarter, the score was twenty to eight, Temple City High School. And trying to kind of mesh with that theme, uh, that Melissa talked about. Um, our high school has been sharing their plans on how they want to be in position to be able to hold prom. Um, in May and we're starting to talk about plans for how we're going to do graduation. So. With the, oh, hey, everybody. There we go. Um, you know, I, I just think that we are getting some really good momentum going and, but I don't want that to in any way. Detract from the day-to-day challenges that are just. Every day it takes so much effort and focus on the parts of our teachers and our staff and, and our students to, to come to school. And do everything they can to make it a positive school day. But I'll just tell you, when I visit. What I witness is a lot of positivity coming out of classrooms and on our campuses. So thank you very much. That's all from student services.
All right, thank you so much. Um, like last, we've got educational technology. Susan, what do you have?
Right, so, um, a quick update, um. On the Wi-Fi install at, um, or update, I should say, at the high school, they've completed the four hundred and five hundred building. Building C of the one hundred and two hundred in the media center. Um, they resolved an issue they had with about a hundred of the access points. Um, they completed the fix for these access points, um, yesterday. So they hope to upgrade the controller and the firmware. So then they can get back on to the Temple City High School campus. Um, they're going to try and finish one hundred, two hundred building. And then on Thursday and Friday, finish the remainder of the high school buildings. And then they will get to working on the configuration of all the new access points so that they can work. So we're excited because they're just about. Um, completed with this portion of the prod- project. And then they'll continue on, um, trying not to disrupt the other sites, but spring break and then the bulk of the work in the summer. Um, as far as the virtual academy goes, we are at one hundred and twenty-six. Um, at the secondary level, which is, uh, I think we started with one hundred and thirty-three at the beginning of the year, but that's about the highest we've been. So we are still seeing some. Um, move over from the high school. And then we're down to about three hundred and thirty-six, um, at the elementary and I suspect we'll have twenty or so. Moving over at the trimester, um, March seventh, when the third trimester begins. Um, I think now that a lot of those kiddos are vaccinated, they're anxious to return back. Um, but I don't know how many yet, so I am anxious to find out. So right now we're at four hundred and sixty-two. So we're still, um, a much larger school than we ever anticipated, but, um, all is well, the virtual academy and with tech, that's it.
Great, thank you so much.
Welcome.
Um, we will move on to item number sixteen, bargaining unit comments, uh, T C E A. We'll start with T C A. Kyla, you have anything for us today?
Yeah, yeah, good evening. I do want to thank Tamar and Chris and Connie for, um, negotiations today. I, I think Tamar was very correct in saying that it was a very long day. Um, you know, I think we often want to be able to solve problems a lot quicker and we want to see progress. And I think that is really difficult in the fact that it seems like there's always some fire to be put out. And our resources are often going towards these problems, um, that pull our attention. And I honestly don't know what the answer is for this. I feel like it's been a similar theme for the past at least four, maybe five years. And I'll be honest, it's pretty frustrating for me. Um, I think it's frustrating for, you know, my members. I think it's frustrating for admin. Um, and I don't know what the answer is. I, I know that just in general, um, teachers, educators are frustrated, we're burnt out. We're feeling that despite, um, the fact that we do, do amazing things, we have amazing students here at this, uh, in this district. And I think we have a lot of amazing employees. So I want to celebrate and appreciate, you know, all the great things that we do, but in the background. It's hard, like, we're just having a really hard time right now. So, um, so I appreciate, um, our day in negotiations and I appreciate the work that. That everyone on the admin side is putting in, um, but like, there's no sugar coating that right now, like, people are really frustrated. We're frustrated that. It seems that we keep trying to solve the same problems every year, but we don't even get to them because we're so busy trying to put out the fires. So. Um, that's all I have to say tonight and I, I, I don't know what the answer is. I, I would love the board. To inquire more maybe on, on maybe what some of the fires are so that we can maybe find a different solution because. I, I don't know, I don't know what the solution is.
All right, Kyla, thank you. We will move on to C S C A one oh five. Tessie?
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Um, it is hard. It's hard everywhere. It's hard out in the world. So I, I appreciate that. Um, we don't have a whole lot more to say or to report. Um, we do have negotiations scheduled. For after spring break, after the second, um, uh, interim report. And that's basically where we are. So that's really all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tessie.
Thank you.
All right, we move on to C S C A eight twenty-three. Art, what do you have?
Hi, um, I'm kind of like on the same boat. Um, we're waiting on negotiations. We started in December the first and we're still waiting on a date to get back to the table. Um, it is frustrating to wait so long. I, in my experience, we never had. But I guess this is the new norm. Um. Other than that, you know, we're waiting on to get back to the table and get things resolved. I can share is. Um, I have members do approach me and they're thinking, um, their, their expenses are very high. And our wages aren't, haven't been increased in quite a, a general, um, a significant increase that could help us. Offset some of our costs. So with that said, I'm hoping that when we do get to the table, we can, we come to a solution and. And get on, on board with, um, getting our members in that level. To where they're more comfortable. Um. I know in this regional area, um, chapters that I do oversee and C, uh, and C S C A. Um, they're, they're, they're doing fine. They're hiring. There's a lot going on and I don't understand how our district is not doing that good. So other than that, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Art. We'll move on to item number seventeen, board member comments. Um, I was just trying to look at. Who went first last time? Hold on a second. Uh, let's see. Um, all right, I don't have it at my fingertips, so I'm just going to go and call. All right, we'll, we'll start with, um, member Giorgino.
I think I went first last time.
Did you?
Okay. You want to let someone else go? Yeah.
All right, um, member Sneed?
Okay, okay. Thank you, President Espinoza. Um, this is a night of congratulations and a lot of thank yous. Um, thank you, Monica, for your great presentation tonight. Um, truly glad to see how Black History Month is being celebrated across the district. Um, congratulations to the, uh, high school science Olympiad team who placed first place overall. The San Marino at their invitational and good luck to them in the, uh, LA County Regionals this coming Saturday. Um, best luck to all of our sports teams. Congratulations to our boys soccer team. We know you're going to do great on Saturday. Um, one yesterday and the girls' basketball team who is playing right now as we speak. Hopefully we get word of how that's going by the end of the evening. Uh, congratulations to the high school drum line who placed fourth at the Southern California Percussion Association Competition Arcadia. And also our, uh, high school cheer song and flag teams who placed at the Golden State Championships. Uh, boys' water polo won three of their four games last Saturday. Great job. Yeah, I believe it was down in Selon Capistrano. Uh, congratulations to Eric Taylor, who has just committed to playing baseball, uh, University of Laverne next year. Um, last night, I know, uh, several of us, uh, watched the Temple City Kiwanis, uh, meeting. Uh, where they once again honored our students of the month and I wanted, and congratulations to, um. All the students who were honored. I really appreciate Kiwanis recognizing our students each month. Um, as you heard earlier, uh, at our last meeting, we approved the plan for the performing, uh, presented by Performing Arts. And we'll be seeing Return of the Musical and the auditions, I believe, are taking place, uh, this week, I believe, or soon. Um, in my, and one of my other capacities, I'm also the, uh, Camellia Festival Float Chairman. So I encourage anybody who wants to decorate anything, they push it down the street on May, at the end of May. Please feel free to design something, decorate something. We'll even have a workshop to tell you how to do it. Uh, but just all you have to do is go to the Camellia Festival website, fill out a form and you too can be a part of the Camellia Festival this year. Um, last thing, um, now that we've made, uh, our outdoor mask wearing optional, uh. I want to thank our families and staff for, uh, their patience while we worked through the county, uh, Department of Health. Um, to update our protocols and, uh, I know it's been a long road. Uh, but this is really a huge step for us back to normalcy and, uh, I appreciate everybody's patience. And, um, hopefully our next big step will move us even closer to what we would call a normal life. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, member Sneed. I found my notes from our last meeting and actually, Donna, you were the last for me.
Oh, I was.
Second to the last. So I'm going to have you go second. Mary Sneed was first last time. So we'll put, we'll put, um, member Giorgino next, um, and then we'll go from the bottom up from there. Okay, go ahead.
Actually, I was, uh, Mary said most of what I was going to say. Congratulations to boys soccer, girls' basketball. Science Olympiad, um, our song, our cheer and our flags for all their accomplishments in the last couple of weeks. Um, thank you to Kiwanis Club, um, for students of the month. I, that's one of my favorite things. Every month I look forward to it. I love hearing the students speak and talk about their plans for the future. And I especially like to hear what they like about school, how they, they love their teachers and their principal and. They even love their lunches at school and so it's, it's really fun to listen to and thank you Kiwanis for doing that every month. The only thing I have to add is just to remind everybody that Ram Rogers is doing a fundraiser called Rams on the Run. You don't have to run, you could walk, you could hike, you could ride your bike. Um, and I believe it goes through the end of this month. So if you're interested, please check out their website and help out our sports programs at Temple City High. Thank you.
All right, thank you, member Giorgino. Next, member Lynn.
Thank you, Board President Espinoza. I would like everyone, um, I hope everyone had a wonderful and restful. President's Day long weekend. Um, I also hope everyone had a good Tuesday yesterday, which was two twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two. I would like to wish everyone a happy calendar week, uh, just like yesterday, in which the numbers and dates, uh, read the same way back. To front as they do front to back. Um, that, I, my understanding doesn't happen for another two hundred years. So enjoy while we can. Um, it ends February twenty-eighth. That's the last calendar day of, you know, this, what, two centuries. Um, I would also like to thank Monica Lu- uh, Lukesh for her excellent presentation. In celebration and remembrance of Black History Month. I would also like to wish everyone a happy Dr. Seuss's Day on March second that's coming up. Um, I would like to thank our staff, teachers and administration for the hard work that you do for all our students. I hear, see and feel your frustrations. And I'm grateful for Dr. Frickers' leadership and the support of our Temple City Unified School District community that is united behind all our students. Uh, through thick and thin, as always, and that is it for, thank you.
Thank you, member Lynn. And next we'll go with member Smith. Member Smith?
Had finally not unmute button, sorry. Um, thank you. I, uh, had a chance to attend the, uh, superintendent's forum on the fifteenth. And during that forum, she shared with people in the community, our plans to address the California Voting Rights Act, which we're actually taking action on tonight. Um, I was a little disappointed in checking in to see how many people participated and it was not very many. I'll just leave it that way. Quite small, but anyway, we'll take action on that later on tonight. I also attended the Kiwanis Club of Temple City Students of the Month event yesterday. And, uh, I, like everybody else, have always enjoyed that too. And, uh, Jerry Jan Bazian is our narrator and he always does a great job interacting with the kids and what. Um, thank you to all the site leaders who put out their regular, uh, principal newsletters. Uh, just some of the topics I saw through the last, since our last board meeting included communication about Black History Month. And thank you also to Monica Lukesh on that. Um, a week of, uh, school counselors, Valentine activities, videos and fifty ways to love your child. Uh, Oak Avenue yearbooks that are on sale, I saw, bright lights, student awards at La Rosa. And, um, it just, it's nice to get all that information out and I appreciate the communication. I know it takes time. And it's probably kind of a little bit of a drag, but, uh, it's good information. It's nice to share. I also want to congratulate all of our athletes and scholars and whatnot from the high school and their participation in the, what, the. And the various events and how well they've been doing. And then lastly, I'd like to thank the seven, actually mostly organizations. And tonight's agenda who donated four thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars to the district for various activities and things. That's it.
Thank you, member Smith. All right, so I will round this off here. Um, I, I echo. All of the congratulations that are my fellow board members, um, have given to all of the amazing athletes. Um, at the high school, they are just doing such a wonderful job and, you know, it's, it's wonderful to watch. I spent some time doing that on a Saturday, um, which was super fun. Um, and I'm hoping if there's something this Saturday, I'll probably be there. So thank you for that. Um, and congratulations to all of the sports teams, um, on really great seasons. Um, I also wanted to just, um, thank those, uh, organizations that donated to our school district this period. Um, your help, um, supporting our kids and, um, giving them the best possible opportunities. Uh, those donations go a long way, so thank you so much. And then in terms of attendance, um, today I attended the C S B A. Board President Training. Um, and then, um, I also attended this period, the Council P T A meeting on. February seventeenth and there was a training that. And there was a training that the PTA offered before the meeting on diversity and inclusion with PTAs. So I attended that. It was very good. And then I did attend Kiwanis. You're right, everybody. Jerry does an amazing job. So thank you, Kiwanis. Congratulations to all the students. And that's it for me. Thank you. All right, we are now on to student board member comments. Kiana, what do you have? Kiana? I think she's frozen. Yes, Donna.
Can I just give a quick update to everybody? Temple City is winning at halftime, 44 to 12.
Yeah, awesome. All right, is Kiana frozen or?
Yeah.
I think she she just dropped, so she'll probably be on. Should I go to Superintendent and come back to? Kiana, would that work? Okay, so Kim, you're up.
Hi, thank you, President Espinoza. First of all, I just want to congratulate the boys soccer team and they made it to the CIF finals and their game is on Saturday here at TCHS. So I'm just hoping that everybody can come out and support them. It will be an exciting game for sure. I also want to thank Connie and Marvin and some people in the business department who worked the entire weekend just to make sure that they hit their deadline for the their report that is coming up on the next board meeting and second interim. We are hopeful that their work and their efforts along with many other people in the district staff comes to a positive conclusion here pretty soon. With the COVID updates, the COVID situation, case rates are declining. And that kind of has opened up some guidelines from the LA County Department of Public Health for us. In turn, we have passed along those updated requirements and guidelines to our principals. This week, we know that masking is no longer mandated outdoors. Although anyone is free to wear a mask anytime they choose, it is just no longer mandated by LA County Department of Public Health. So that is truly a good sign that the pandemic is slowing down and that we are getting getting back to the normal order of things pretty shortly. They will say, they did say that new guidelines are on the horizon. So we're kind of looking out in the next couple of weeks to see what else they have coming our way. And we will be sure to pass that along to our staff, students, and families when those do come through. We are currently working with our site leadership so that we gradually move towards that sense of normal and open up the school activities and assemblies and welcome some of those things back onto our campuses, which have been sorely missed during the pandemic. So we are working all without the principals to look at all of the logistics of having those activities open back up. And so our students and staff will surely be happy with that. And then finally, we are hosting another Superintendent's Forum. We do like to do that whenever we have to share things with the staff and students and public and our families. So this students, this Superintendent Forum will be on preschool, universal TK, and then full day kindergarten. So those are extremely large initiatives that the district has decided to take on. There's multiple layers of that, multiple planning, many people involved. I want to just thank all of the individuals who have been involved in that process, all those collective conversations and the decision making that has happened throughout. So we will be announcing that Superintendent Forum shortly, and I hope that everybody will tune into that. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Kim. That sounds wonderful. I know lots of people are very interested in that that topic. So thanks to everyone involved, including you and everyone involved on the work related to the the opening of our new preschool. We're gonna go head and circle back because I believe student board member Lee is back on. So we'll go back to item number 18, Student Board Member Comments. Kiana, what do you have?
Yes, Ms. Espinoza, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I'm so sorry, my wifi just kicked me out. I had the pleasure of meeting with Ms. Heredia, the principal at La Rosa last Wednesday morning. And she'd like to share with everyone that they celebrated the 100th Day of School as well as Lunar New Year at La Rosa. Students shared Valentine's Day grams and cards and the first grade was able to decorate their own box. She is currently holding coffee with the principal meetings. They are currently virtual. And they just completed their safety plan with the school safety committee team, as we have also wrapping up at the high school. Like Ms. Lukesh noted and so wonderfully just showed us how La Rosa is learning about Black History Month through their arts, books, and posters. In regards to posters, they're also designing posters for their PBIS program. And for example, she, Ms. Heredia, did note that they're using utilizing posters and PR graphics to exemplify for their students their expectations for how they expect their students to conduct themselves both in and out of the classroom. For example, their drop off expectations and their hands as hygiene and safety. They're also planning Read Across America on the last week of March, including starting a reading contest program where they're encouraging their students to read a million words. So they're working for looking forward to that coming up soon before the spring break. Currently with Mrs. Young, their TED Ed advisor, they're starting their second round in March. And she did, I would love to extend some recognition to Ms. D. Moreno at La Rosa, who started coding programs with their third graders and the scratch coding programs for their first and second graders. And they're working to supply the makers room or innovation room to explore STEAM programs for their students. In terms of athletics, I just wanted to also congratulate our girls' basketball team for making it to the CIF semifinals round. Again, where they're playing tonight, so I wish I could support them there. Also, our boys soccer team are making it to the finals this Saturday at the high school. They're actually the first soccer team in Temple City High School history to make it this far. So please come out to support our boys soccer team this Saturday as well as our boys tennis team tomorrow at 3:00 PM as they play against San Gabriel High School and our boys volleyball team on Friday at 3:30 as they play against Flint Ridge Prep. Thank you very much and have a wonderful evening. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Kiana. All right. So we will move on to written communications. I have a question for my fellow board members. If something, if I'm, if if we have some written comments from individuals about a topic that's already been resolved and addressed, do I still have to, should I read it?
I guess. Did they request?
Like, I'll get, we have two letters from parents who talked about the mandatory outdoor masking, but we've already sent out a communication that says it's no longer required. So should I read it?
Do they ask that it be read?
I asked them if they wanted it read. This was before the communication. They said yes. So should I just read it?
I would.
Yeah. Okay, all right, I will. So we have two on the same topic about the outdoor masking. And we all know that we've gotten a parent apparent square communication that changes that. But this is, this was sent February 15th and it says, Dear Dr. Fricker and the Board of Education, I'd like to respectfully ask that you rescind the mandatory use of masks outdoors effective immediately as guidance has changed and cases are decreasing. It will no longer be required by local government agencies and should now be left up to the families and staff members to choose what is best for them. I know how hard you have worked to protect the staff and students of our district. Though I haven't agreed with all of your decisions, I've always trusted your intentions to be honorable. I would now contend that the best way to honor all stakeholders in the district is to allow for independent choices to be made wherever possible. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. Take care, Amanda Roblack. And then on February 16th, we received a written communication from Griselda Garcia. It says, Hello. I I'm reaching out to you as a concerned parent. I believe the County Department of Public Health lifted the mask mandate for outdoor activities. If that's the case, are students aware, are students aware of this? And if not, please ask teachers to inform their students. My son is a student at TCHS and is still wearing a mask at PE. I don't believe it's necessary. Thank you for your attention to this matter. If you have any questions, please contact me, Griselda Garcia. And then the last written communication, I just want to comment that really loved seeing our students participate in the governance process by writing us a letter. This letter comes from several students from Longden, fourth graders. And it says, Dear Dr. Fricker, it's the same letter and every student sent it. And and there's a list of names here. But it says, Dear Dr. Fricker, Marisol Cortez, Michael Lynn, Matt Smith, Melissa Espinoza, Mary Sneed, Donna Georgino, February 22nd, 2022. We want to thank you for providing lunches for us and we appreciate all of the work you do to get lunches ready every day for everyone at Longden. There are some lunch items that we think are okay, such as the mac and cheese, corn dogs, cheeseburgers, add lettuce and tomatoes, please, and Bosco sticks. We love the ice shaving. Strawberries are favorite, although we haven't had it this year. We do have one suggestion. Can the corn dog and pizza be placed in a foil bag like the chicken burger? We would like to have some lunch items back. We would like to have nachos, Subway, Crisp Crispetos, ramen, spaghetti, potato chips, salad, mashed potatoes, apples slash veggies, apple juice and orange juice. Can we also have rice bowls, yogurt slash muffin meals, and plenty of fruit and vegetables like Oak Avenue in the high school? There are several items that are really bad. The sun butter and jelly sandwiches, 12 grams of added sugar, grilled cheese, pizza in a plastic bag, and all turkey sandwiches. The cheese is slimy, sticky, and frozen. We would love to sit down with you and talk about healthier lunches for elementary students. Many students just throw away their lunches, which is a waste of money. TCUSD's website says the lunches are meeting USDA requirements and we don't think these lunches are healthy for kids. Thank you for your time, Longden students. And there are several names. Should I read them all? No? Okay, all right. So thank you, Longden students, for participate participating in the governance process. We really appreciate the feedback. And I know Connie had some comments in her update about that. All right. So we move on to the discussion information portion of our agenda, Educational Services, item number 21, LCAP update from Chris Holmes.
Hi, everybody again. I'm gonna give you just a brief update here, a mid-year snapshot that we need to give. So I'm gonna share my screen here. We'll see how I do. I'm not super techie techie. Okay. All right, here we go. This here. There we go. All right. So Section 124E of Assembly Bill 130 requires LEAs to present an update on the annual 2021-22 LCAP and budget overview for parents by February 28th at a regular scheduled meeting of the governing board of the LEA. At this meeting, we're going to basically cover the supplement for the annual update and also cover mid-year outcome data and mid-year expenditure and implementation data. We really have to cover just the first portion until we're, this is actually a pretty long slideshow and I apologize, my my warning light came on for my battery. And so we're gonna cover the first part that's mandated to be covered in the meeting. And then this slideshow will be available for the community to review. Okay, so the first part here is just a budget overview, looking at our total LCFF adopted budget and what we're looking at in the budget this year now currently. And then the LCFF for the non-dupli, our non-duplicated students, the supplemental grants that are dedicated to those certain students in our population that need added supports. And so our LCAP covers these areas. This is an overview so that when somebody engages with this slideshow online, they can understand the steps that are followed in this presentation. And I'm gonna just skip these to go to the first presentation slide, which is prompt one. How we document how in our LCAP we have engaged with our educational partners in looking at our budget. And so the Temple City, Temple City Unified School District has collaborated with our educational partners, our families. And we've done this in a number of areas. We've done this in our interactions and our meetings with our leadership of CSCA and our TCEA, so our bargaining unit members, district and site leadership meetings, LCAP committee meetings, our DLEC committee, which is our district level English language learner advisory committee, our school site council teams at each site, as well as through a number of staff, student, and parent surveys that have been sent out, as well as our board presentations and our superintendent's presentations as well. So one of the things that we have to share is where are some other areas that we are receiving funding in addition to the LCFF areas that were mentioned in the previous slide? And so we, as a district, have applied for and received one-time monies in certain areas, which include an educator effectiveness block grant, the ELO, a learning opportunity grant. We have another grant we are looking at applying for called the A through G Completion Improvement Grant, as well as we are going to be receiving funds as we're entering into the preschool implementation and the universal transitional kindergarten implementation that we will be working on over the next few years as we expand access to TK from students whose birthday ends on December 2nd, all the way in the next four years to students whose birthday ends in August. Oop, I'm going too fast. There we go. I have to go through five total prompts here. So that was the first. In prompt two, the Temple City Unified School District, we're addressing the use of additional concentration fundings. Our unduplicated pupil percentage is 45%. This includes students who are designated as English learners. They may live in a home that is at the below the income threshold for qualifying for free and reduced price meals. They may be students who are currently in a foster program or experiencing homelessness. All of these things we've learned are areas where students are under greater stress and require greater support. And so local educational agencies, school districts who meet or exceed 55% of their student population meeting this criterion are eligible to receive concentration funding. We did our pupil counts on CalPad Census Day, which is the first Wednesday in October. So a quick shout out to Gina Campari, who works in our office and does that work for us and does really amazing work. And we're so thankful to have her in our building, working with it. And I'm so thankful to have her working on my team. And so these pupil counts will affect our funding in multiple ways. We, as a district, do not meet the threshold of 55% student population, of 55% of our student population being in these non-duplicated areas. And so we do not receive that concentration grant funding. Prompt three, educational partner engagement for one-time federal funds. The Temple City Unified School District extended efforts to engage its educational partners for one-time federal COVID-19 funds in the following ways. So if you remember, like, one of our presentations to the board was about our SIR3 funds. This is just one of the areas. We conducted student, staff, parent surveys. We developed and then distributed them and collected feedback. Our superintendent's task force committee meetings here at the Board of Education, we presented on these topics. Our district website portal provided opportunities for our community to gather information and give feedback. Our TCUSD Help Desk, which is still working effectively, gathers information on a daily basis from families in multiple areas. In our meetings with our union leadership, they provide feedback on areas they think we could be doing a better job as a district. We engage in meetings with our district leadership here at the district office, sometimes on Zoom, gathering information from our site leaders. This each week, the superintendent sends out a newsletter to families, sharing with them all the possible, all the appropriate information to let them know where we are in addressing our current district needs as it relates to a normal school year, but also that we are in a, still kind of coming out of the tail end of the pandemic and how we are appropriately meeting the needs of the district in those specific areas. And then our superintendent's webinars, which And then our superintendent's webinars, which um, I I know what Mr. Smith talked about with the last one, but we've been really pleasantly surprised with, prior to that, how uh, what good attendance we've had at those, at those webinars and so appreciative of our community members uh attending. So in prompt four, we cover the implementation specifically of what I referred to earlier as SR three expenditures. The TCUSD SR three expenditure plan focused on technology upgrades, HVAC upgrades, mental health supports, staffing shortages and learning loss. Um, we increased technology for in-person learning. We implement, by the implementation of the Wi-Fi hubs, beginning in February of two thousand and twenty-two, to increase user access as connectivity uh was not as strong as we would have liked it. Uh, we developed a virtual academy for students uh who selected to remain in the distance learning program. This grew from one hundred students to almost six hundreds. Um, and we were very grateful for the team effort that went into play there to keep that program going strong. We've worked to improve the air quality of our buildings, our classrooms, repairing and replacing HVAC units at both elementary and secondary sites. Um, for, we've added a counselor for social emotional support to increase student mental health. Um, this was a counselor currently that served in a certain uh capacity for us. And when we got back to our normal numbers at the high school, we were able to keep this counselor and they are serving in a number of areas. And I can, I can refer to this a little bit more in another presentation that I'll be used to presenting momentarily. Um, we've offered an extended learning program. We had summer school. We are currently offering credit recovery programs at the high school and after-school interventions at multiple school sites. Um, and we are, we actually were able to increase our substitute pay to try to attract as many substitutes as possible because during COVID, we were experiencing a higher level of student absences and we even had some moments where we had teachers out as well. And so we were able to do that and trying to meet that need that presented itself during the Omicron surge. And then finally, the last prompt that I need to present in this meeting, how are we using our fiscal resources consistent with LCAP? Uh, TCUSD is using fiscal resources that have been received for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year to align with the goals, actions and expenditures outlined in the Temple City Unified School District's twenty-one, twenty-two LCAP. Um, so for example, LCAP goal one, action fifteen, instructional technology supports. LCAP goal two, action two, professional development on social emotional SEL. Um, and then LCAP goal three, action six, uh, universal access with, as we refer to, early Wi-Fi hubs on our campuses. Continuing on, LCAP goal two, action five, professional development in the areas of MTSS or multi-tiered systems of support. LCAP goal two, action nine, um, paper, which is our online tutoring platform that has become pretty popular and we consider to be highly effective. And we are very proud of our schools con- uh continuing to basically make sure that the children and families know that this is available to them. We are getting uh really good reviews from the families and the children who use this product. LCAP goal two, action ten, summer school. TCUSD provides summer learning opportunities to students who are at promise or in need. So we did this last summer and we are currently in the planning stages for the upcoming summer year, summer session, excuse me. And LCAP goal three, action two, at promise counselor for the DDSLC. This is still an ongoing um in-progress goal that we are working on. And so that's basically what needs to be presented in the meeting according to uh the mid-year report guidelines. There are a lot more slides that have the details in terms of our metrics and their funding sources. And this will be made available, of course, to the board as well as to the community. And I do want to ask if anybody has any questions.
Do you have any questions for Chris?
Not so much a question, just sort of a comment. First, thank you for this very, very well-done presentation. Um, I mean, you could have just presented the template. But I mean, you you this, you 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 simplified it, you communicated very clearly. Um, and thank you for um putting this together. And this is, I would say, the most important document that we have. And this media review, I mean, I know the county keeps on changing the template on us every year. Um, but thank you for this wonderful presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Lynn.
Okay, um, do we have, um, did you have another presentation um that that you wanted to speak from um, or can, can we? Bring that one down?
Whatever you'd like to do, yeah. I'm also gonna do a brief presentation on uh, kind of like what we're trying to get accomplished with counseling. I know that our counselors had presented, so that was also on the agenda. So that's the only thing. For this, there are other slides in this presentation. Um, but that, there's just kind of detailed slides. We don't need to go through each one of them at this time, according to the guidance that I got from Laco about presenting.
Okay, great. No, I just, I wanna be able to see people if we don't.
Oh, yeah, yeah, of course. Oh, by the way, I just got it up. Forty-six to twenty-one, our girls are leading and it says, I think it's the end of the third quarter.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you so much. Alright, we are on to item number twenty-two, counselor update, and Chris, you are back on.
Okay. Try again, here we go. Um, escape. Alright, this is um. So I I think that in any school year, um, the work of our counselors, just like the work of our teachers, is still very, very important and um thinking of all the stress that everybody's going through um and that we are witnessing and experiencing and uh especially with some of our kids um who went through so much during the school closure period of the pandemic. And we talked about it, but at the same time, until you actually started to see it in action, to see the return, the impact of returning to school, what it had on some of our students. I think one of the things that we would agree upon and um is that students turn to those relationships they trust. And so, just like the counselors presented at at the recent board meeting, they're turning to their counselors when they are experiencing high levels of stress. Now, not only their counselors, I know they have other relationships on on the school campuses, but they very much are turning to the, to the counselors on our, our campuses and, and so they are seeing an increased volume of not only seeing students, but also seeing students in very escalated states at times. Um, so I, during the pandemic, I watched a really wonderful documentary about Mr. Rogers and and it really rang true to me or kind of connected with our counselors as being this kind of, leading this kind of, kind of uh, I can't, I don't know how to describe it, but just, this is the way they approach their work is when things are hard, that they're there for kids. Um, so we know how much has, has happened and we are seeing, as was reported to us, hires incidents of discipline behavior problems, higher incidence of students with academic needs, higher incidence of students experiencing anxiety and stress, and higher incidents even including, relative to a normal year, higher levels or numbers of suicidal ideation. And so we know that this need exists and we have been working with our counseling teams and been working with our school sites to try to meet this need and we, since the beginning of the year, and it has been something that's been very important to us, but also has, at times, been challenging to, to find the proper people to put in place. So fortunately for us, we had somebody already in place, serving in a um substitute capacity. And when that person they were substituting for returned, we were able to keep them for the rest of the year. And they've been able to support the virtual academy for part of their workday and also support the high school and be a part, as, as much as they can as part of that team as well in meeting the needs of students who will come in to the counseling department. And so it's not ideal, but we were fortunate to have this uh asset in place. And this person's just been doing a really, really good job for us and fitting in very nicely with that high school team. I meet both with, on a monthly basis with all of the counselors in the district, but also within the counseling team. There is a four-person crisis intervention team that is developing our suicide prevention plan. And so they have had, not always had all the time they've needed to meet, to complete it. But today, they finally were able to get to the, to the, to a number of edits and the goal of this team is to present the plan to the board at one of, if not the next board meeting, the meeting after that, so that we can ratify it and accept it and we can have a uniform process of addressing students in crisis on our campuses. All of our, our counselors do an amazing job in this area, but this has been a really important part of uh and focus of our work in, in the counseling team. And it really has been counselor-led. It's been re- I've been really impressed and proud of our counseling, our counselors and our counseling team and their work in this area. Um, another area where, where we were, I felt like it was really good that the counselors felt strongly to, to communicate. And it's one of the things that I really uh take pride or I appreciate a value in our counseling team is they communicate the needs of our students um and, and advocate for students. And so in this area, we, with these heightened and increased numbers of suicide, uh, the suicidal ideation incidents, we were having our counseling team staying late into the night on our campuses. Um, and so it was important that in this relationship with the bargaining unit and with our counselors, um, when they are asked to stay far beyond their normal workday, um, the school board and uh our executive cabinet decided to support them in having to stay late at night, especially when they have to be there with, as, as a partnership, as a pair, in supporting a student in crisis. To add to that, one of the things that we've been witnessing recently with students in crisis is that the county is overloaded. Um, and so it had always been, when we would reach out to the county, that it would take a number of hours for them to respond. Recently, we are just being told that either they don't have a team to send or there is no bed to send them children to. And so now, in our plan, which our counselors have been working diligently on, we have to make sure we have areas, next steps in our plan when um, when that resource is unavailable. So I apologize, the, the lights in the building or? Putting on a show here, Mr. Holmes, okay? Alright, so that has been like a curveball that even in normal times have been tough, but that's an additional challenge to our counseling teams because I will tell you, our counselors are so committed to making sure that our children are always in safe hands. Um, and so this is just another piece of the puzzle for us that we're trying to address. And so the issue that we're kind of facing now is that we have these immediate goals or these short-term, these short-term needs, excuse me, and challenges as we're experiencing the second part of the tail end of this pandemic crisis. And we are doing everything we can to try to use our one-time monies to, to fill those needs as best we can. And at the same time, counseling has always been a priority in this district and meeting the needs of children at every level of, every aspect of who they are has always been a priority. Our, our counseling teams in this district are, are award-winning and well-known and and I would tell you, just now, just working with them, you know how much they care about their students holistically. So in, in a long range, for long-range solutions, we wanna be able to, to sit down and look at how long, what are, what are our population numbers gonna look like in the next three to five years? Um, but also, because numbers don't just tell the whole story, what do we predict is going to be the level of need of our students? Because um, we don't expect that there is going to be um, a quick healing coming out of such a stressful experience. And so um, well, couple of ideas that we've discussed in executive cabinet. Well, first, right now, like we were talking about with short range, the short-range goal, we've been flying a position for a DIS counselor, an additional DIS counselor at the high school for some time now. And when we weren't getting the applicants for that position, we reached out to a non-public agency. And we still haven't received applicants for that position, as well as the non-public agency is struggling in finding candidates as well to fill those positions. It's just, it's a need that exists at a high level across the county and across the state. But we are continuing to fly those positions, as well as working with the non-public agency to find someone that the children can connect with, that can be on our campus for the rest of the year. Recently, human resources also flew. After having a conversation with Dr. Fricker and as executive cabinet, they flew a position for a, uh, an additional temporary counselor or a counseling pool, we, because we want to be able to get early into the process, knowing that counseling and counseling needs are gonna be such a priority at all schools. And so we wanna be able to get there first and find quality candidates that can fit in with our teams and meet the needs of our, of our students. Um, we think for the long term, um, as was suggested in a recent board meeting, evaluating, concentrating the alternative education counseling duties maybe into one role. One of the things that was mentioned from the visiting counseling team was, maybe in, currently, a number of people might be pulled in that direction, but possibly it might work better that, that the Doug Sears site is where one person is stationed and they can meet the needs of a number of these smaller specialized programs. Because one of the things that, you know, we know at the, at the uh continuation school, at the Dr. Doug Sears Learning Center is those are students, as, as the counselor, um, Raul Acevedo talked about, um, he calls them tier four. Because those are students who, through no fault of anyone, especially their own, the high school was not the ideal experience for them. And so they do need high levels of support there. So although the population size of that school is small, um, those are students who really definitely uh require a high level of support from us and deserve it. Um, and so knowing that we have a couple of programs located there, that would be something we would want to evaluate and examine. And then on the other side is, is just kind of looking at where the mental health needs of our district are going in the next, let's say, three to five years. And we can evaluate at that point and where we think we want to go with our counseling programs. But I just wanna end my presentation and I do appreciate your patience and time and in allowing us to present on this topic that um, every one of our educators in this district, at any point in time, is finding themselves in a position to meet the needs of a child. And I'm, I just, every time I witness it, I'm so proud. And, and I, most especially, I'm so proud of our counseling teams and every time I interact and work with them because they always put students first and, and that's really our mission as educators. So thank you very much and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have uh questions for Chris? Okay, I had, I just had one and it's just a very, you know, like for our public, um, you know, we talked about the short-term goals, which, number one, let me start by saying thank you for the presentation and pulling it together in such a quick turnaround. I know I asked, uh, it was something that we asked for, like, you know, from the last meeting. So thank you so much. I really appreciate the team that pulled that together. Um, and just for the public, so alright, we have the short-term goals, um, the DIS counselor and the one tenth counselor. Is it that, are we having difficulty because the demand is just so high that there just aren't the resources? Or is it a pay issue where like some of these, these specialties can get paid higher outside of this public school environment? What, is it both? Is it one? What is it? What's the challenge in getting these filled?
I, I think it would be most appropriate when it comes to that side of it to defer to, to uh Dr. Cataroyan. She's the expert in this area. And um, I know that she's been working very hard and her whole team in HR has been.
Yes, that's the first time someone's called me an expert. So if you need to repeat that through the board meeting, I, that would be good. Thank you. I appreciate it. Um, so it's actually um, both, President Espinoza, with the DIS counselor, it is the specific credentials and qualifications we're looking for. So we are requiring a PPS, which is the counseling piece, and then we're requiring for the um, the DIS piece itself, we're requiring an LCSW or an MFT degree. And a lot of those are specialized positions in which they're usually in outside fields. Um, so the pay is much higher when they're working for outside entities. Um, so that is one thing we do need to look into. In regards to the counseling piece, just the counselor, there's such a high demand right now. So that um, we're having, I think, in speaking to other districts, they too are struggling filling those roles. Um, so that is in speci- specifically to the counselor, but the DIS one was a position that we created um specifically to meet the demands of um our kids on IEPs. And we were fortunate enough to find a fabulous DIS counselor. Um, so now we're hoping to find another one.
Okay, alright. Kim, did you wanna add anything?
No, um, I do think it's, it's, that is the correct answer in the counseling. Um, normally, if you go to school to be a counselor, you are a PPS-registered counselor. And that means you can do academic counseling and you really don't, can't, can't do therapeutic counseling if it were. And so to have both degrees is, is not always the case. Most programs and, at, at the master's level do not combine them. You actually have to go extra to get your PPS afterwards. And so um, that was a program that I went through. I was in LSW and then you, I got my PPS after that. So many people don't intend to go into the counseling field or the therapeutic fields and then um, go into uh, school academic counseling. They're, they just start off in a different vein with a different professional um, goal in mind. And, you know, it's, it's very, it's, we're finding it difficult to get a person with both credentials. um, goal in mind. And, you know, it's it's very, it's, we're finding it difficult to get a person with both credentials.
Thank you all for explaining that. I think it's helpful for the public and for everybody listening. All right, we can move on to um business services, item number twenty-three, budget update from Connie.
Good evening, good evening, board. Marie, could you please help me loading the presentation? Uh, sorry, she said she's helping me. Okay, let me, let me try to see whether I can make the work.
Marie's got it.
Got it. Great. Thank you. So I'm just continue to, uh, I'm starting the presentation while we try to set up. Um, Bora, um, we are in the process of prepare a second interim report. And there, I just want to share with the board that the district uses various guidelines to prepare our budget. And the um, the from ad code from the Department of Edu- um, Education from the state and also from the county school service of California. And also, there's a board policy regarding how the district and doing the budget. So um, I want to share with the board about the district policy because we've um seldom we mentioned that a board policy. So it is time to refresh everybody's memory. Uh, next slide, please. So the board policy through uh one hundred said that the board um will have a crit- critical response survey to adopt a sound budget for each fiscal year in along with the district mission vision. And at the end, this is the first paragraph for the board policy three one zero zero. And the end of first paragraph said the Board of Education direct that an additional reserve of two percent of the total budget shall be maintained and all time except where where otherwise directed. Next slide, please. This is our budget cycle. Uh, this budget cycle basically similar to all the California public school and mostly for the um, single adoption. So right now, we are moved from the first interim reporter back to December to the second interim reporter, which we plan to submit for the board at the next board meeting. Next slide, please. This is the similar slide we um share with the board at our first interim report. And there was a question about the any final balance. Um, I just want to spend some time ex- expand the any final balance specifically uh to the sec- first interim reporter. Um, the any final balance of of eighteen point five million dollars. Next slide, please. The any final basis, there's a lot of component. And there are just terminology about certain and set aside under each category. No expendable mean that the amount cannot be spent. And the restricted mean that the spending has a restriction because the constraint that are externally imposed by various agencies. Commit, wh- which mean that the spending will be determined by formal action of the governing board. The assign mean that is a governing board or a district set aside for specific purpose. And unassigned which mean that can be used for any purpose. Next slide, please. So the any final balance at the first interim report is eighteen point five million dollar. This mean that compared with the total expenditure for eighty-six million dollar over eighty-six million dollar, it is twenty-one point fifty-one percent. So under the any final balance, there's a foreign categories. We had a next expendable, which mean is a district-wide, there's revolving cash account is fifteen thousand dollar, which is zero point zero two percent. Restrictor most likely is category program, which is over two million dollars, uh, equivalent to two point three six percent. Assigned is seven point three million dollar and add a quarter, three percent result is two point five million dollar. Unassigned, unapproved is six point five million dollar is seven point five seven million dollars. So um, I just want to um have more explanation about eighteen point five million dollar. What that mean for each of us? What that mean the eighteen point five million dollars? So um, I think the only thing make people easy to understand is um, the district uh, um, we, if we use October twenty twenty-one a month for the district-wide employee payroll, which mean total compensation, payroll and benefit, it is over four point eight million dollars. The reason I pick up October is October is four months, there's less holiday and 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 uh less um national and the local holiday. So it's it's a very representative. Because when you have a um holiday, then on that day, they say there's no extra hours, there's no um O T. So it is probably not that representative. So that's why I I use that a a number. So basically eighteen point eighteen over eight eighteen point seven million dollars is equivalent, equivalent less than four months district-wide employees salary and benefit. So under under assigned, there's a couple of categories. Under signed, we have an L C F target and then textbook adoption and the adoption for the custom technology and the school base medical administrative activity and various associations where uh on the health and welfare set aside. So the last item is um according to board policy, additional two percent reserve. So when we move for a second interim reporter, the assigned the number would most likely will be changed. Um, L C F F um estimated balance will be changed based on, because last, this is a first interim um, projection. So textbook, we were updated um based on most of the reason um evaluation. And it would feel like we can release the um base classroom te- uh technology. Because I think that we can use other funding to cover twenty thousand dollar. We can um, we will definitely release that portion. And the school-based medical administrative, um, this part of the aside, we uh, we will also re- uh, release. But a union health and welfare, we think we still need to keep it because this involves a street association. And this is the 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 things we need to talk about. So we will just keep it and update uh with the most updated information and as well as uh two percent additional reserve. This will be update according to the based on the change of the general fund in Thai and cost. Next slide, please. So our plan, we're working very hard for a second interim reporter, try to uh dot ice process. And the deadline to submit to the Lego is on or before March seventeen. And as a request by Lego from the first interim reporter, we do need submit fiscal stability plan and definitely need a uh including a budget reduction. We try our best to balances um, balance the budgets this time. And also, we will continue promote our industrial white enrollment because the enrollment is our um, our bread. We're here because we have students. If there are no students, then we are out of business. And also, you know, Temple City, we have a great program. And um, within the region, our school, the part of our school has a reputation. So we'll continue to move our school, promote our enrollment. Also, attendance is so important and students learn when they come to school. And we also um continue to support um um, through the virtual academies, through independent, short-term independent study, studying and continue to support the students um learning from a different method. And also, we already starting prepare the preschool, um, the facility is a preparation already started. And we hope that fee-based preschool studying next uh, next school year will be um bring additional students to the district. So um, next slide, that is in my presentation. Any question from the board from uh from the committees? And from communities?
Any questions? Uh, member C? You're on mute.
Uh, the eighteen point five million, you said that is equal to four months of salary and benefits. What is recommended? I I thought it was recommended that we have up to six months. Is that correct or is it four months? What?
So um, it is, it is also um, um, Miss Smith, it's also um depend on because of the the eighteen, over eighteen point five million dollar, I just want to let to the committee and the district employee what that mean? Because the number itself doesn't mean much. If we say, oh, an eighteen point five million dollar only can last four months of of district to entire staff employees salary and compensation, that is more meaningful. Of course, from budgets, um budget-wise, that the more is better. But as far as the eighteen point five million dollar cover the uh three percent reserve and the cover the um additional two percent uh under the board policy. Um, I think we are fine. The the reason I I want to list is I want to make sure that um when we talk about any firmness, because there's a lot of um different category. For example, fifteen thousand dollar is the revolving cash account. We just cannot spend that money because that's set aside. And also, you have a assigned, you have a categorical program, money is restricted. We cannot use category program um freely because there's title one, title two, title three, there is restriction from state. And 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 also, of course, we will use this strategically. So that's why I'm trying to um uh help uh provide more information, be transparent. And there, of course, I'm welcome for all the idea to maximize the uh the resources so that we can release some more funding to uh um, to put on the tables. That's, that's, that's the whole purpose.
Thank you.
Member, thank you. Member Lynn?
Thank you. Um, thank you, Connie, for this uh, I would say, very transparent presentation. I just, you've done such a outstanding job with the presenting the numbers in a very understandable way. Um, I know you have a a busy couple of weeks ahead of you to meet the March seventeenth interim second interim report deadline to Lego. And I know the board has to approve it prior to that. Um, with regards to board policy thirty-one hundred, uh, which, you know, as you mentioned earlier, talks about the board's responsibility on adopting a sound budget for each fiscal school year in line with the um, the comprehensive plans, um, especially the L cap that Chris presented earlier. The mid-year L cap review, um, which is very comprehensive. I think the question now for you is um, working closely with Chris and the educational educational services department. To what extent have we, from a budgetary standpoint, um, been aligned mid-year? In terms of the goals established in the L cap and the amount that we've spent towards those goals?
Uh, do you want me to answer or Chris answer?
Chris, Ken, whoever. So to what extent has the budget aligned in terms of what the L cap has budgeted? Align to to the mid-year review of the L cap?
So um, Dr. Lee, uh, let me just started um, being new to the district. And um, this is the first time I see the presentation. And because um, you know, um, I think as service have a lot of expert um on the L cap. Um, I think this is unusual year. Dr. Lee, you probably know more than than me. And we have a lot of one-time COVID money. So um, I think we, in addition to use the L cap money to uh su- support our and the L C F F money to support L cap, we will strategically incorporate the one-time money. One-time money have a federal and a state and they have deadlines. And I know that the policy even from legal, because um before COVID, Dr. You know that Lego is closely watching the L cap carryover. Because each year, the purpose of L cap is provide additional service for those kids fit the um low-income, free to use meal, English learner and um foster user and homeless. Because of the additional money, I think that the the guideline kind of lose little bit. So um if like, I haven't hear from business standpoint, um, standpoint, I have not received a legal burden say that the district required to limit the L C F F um carryover. So unless they give us a deadline to spare um L C F F funding, especially for the supplemental grant the district only have, I would uh like to use the one-time COVID money first because of those combined COVID money has deadline for for September twenty twenty-four. So uh, at this moment, for example, with technology pieces, we have been strategically used as a three for various technology to uh rebuild our infrastructure, Wi-Fi access hotspot. So for counseling, right? So counseling, we also strategically use a one-time funding to to provide counseling, mental health. So um, I think we can definitely, this is a mid-year turn up. We will definitely take a look at to align those uh one-time money into the uh L cap and make sure that the bottom line is we will keep those dollar can be last longer and and keep it up first and then use the dollar who has a deadline to spend, use them first.
Right. And and for the public about, you know, what Connie, as you said, you know, it's best to use restrictive funds first and not such general fund. Uh, because restrictive funds are are the ones that are you in necessarily have been categorized for specific projects. Um, just real quick, you know, it just follow up. Um, would you say that the mid-year review, the expenditures laid out in our original plan or L cap plan? We've spent about half of it into the goals in the L cap, more or less?
And Dr. Lee, um, I have not um do that, but I'm just tell you my gut feeling. Um, I think we're probably um less um, either fifty percent or less than fifty percent. Just uh, my my rationale is we have a strategic use of one-time money. So so of course, uh, when um, Mr. Home and come back and then I would definitely uh work with him and work with Chris and of course, Kim and and try to finish the second interim report, go back to L C F F, try to align the L cap so that we make sure that when we finish a year, that we rely everything um properly.
Yeah, just for the public's knowledge, you know, BP thirty-one hundred is basically the board's responsibility for the budget or oversight. And I want to make sure the public hears this. That um, what Connie is doing is she's looking at very creative ways using restricted funds first. And then hopefully, you know, to save some of the general fund for other purposes that allow us more flexibility in the future. At the same time, the the um local control accountability plan allows us more local control. That's the whole intent of L C F F. Um, and L cap. We do have more local control in in how that money is spent. And then the board is now tasked with that responsibility to o- oversee what's happening. Um, the mid-year review is something that um is relatively new um, in in this whole process. Okay, just for the public's knowledge. Thank you, Connie.
Thank you, Connie. Thank you, Dr. Lynn. Um, anybody else have any comments? All right. So before we move on, just wanted to share that the girls won their game sixty-five to forty-nine. So congratulations to them. Yay. All right. I think we are moving on now to discussion-action portion of the agenda. Item number twenty-four, under administration, the twenty-twenty-two California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly Election. Um, the board may vote for two delegates. And we were provided some information about the delegates. It looks like there's three and we have to select two. So do, can I get a motion? Uh, member Georgino?
I'll make a motion that we vote for Kimberly, Ken and Gary Scott.
And I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to um vote for Kimberly Ken, King and um Gary Scott. Um, any discussion? All right, let's go to the vote. Um, preferential vote from student board member Lee. Yes. Uh, I'm a yes. Member Lynn?
Yes.
Member Georgino?
Yes.
Members, um, Smith?
Yes.
And members Sneed?
Yes.
Okay, it's, um, by unanimous vote, we've got, um, we're voting for. Um, Kimberly King and Gary Scott, so thank you so much for that one. We'll move on to item number twenty-five, adoption of resolution twenty-one, twenty-two. Dash twenty-one revised cer- certification of signatures. Um, is there any description about this? Oh, we have to take, get the motion first, right, okay, um, can I get a motion in a second for this?
We'll approve.
Okay, motion by member Smith.
Second.
Second by member Georgino. And now, do we have any description about what this is?
We're just adding to the, um, uh, signatures for the district now that we have hired a director of fiscal. And, um, for Chris Holmes, who is interim for, um, Richard Bowman.
Okay, all right, so let's go ahead and move to the vote unless there's any questions about that. All right, preferential vote from student board member Lee?
Yes.
Okay, um, members Sneed?
Yes.
Member Lynn?
Yes.
Member Smith?
Yes.
Member Georgino?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that passes five zero. Um, which we will move on to item number twenty-six, adoption of resolution twenty-one, twenty-two dash twenty-two, proclaiming March as Arts Education Month. Um. Uh, I'd like to motion this one. I, I've learned today that I can motion. So I'll, I'll motion, do we have a second?
Okay.
All right, members Sneed? Um, any discussion on this one? It's pretty straightforward. Okay, let's move to the vote, preferential vote from student board member Lee?
Yes.
All right, I'm a yes, member Georgino?
Yes.
Members Sneed?
Yes.
Member Smith?
Yes.
And member Lynn?
Yes.
Okay, great, that passes five zero. We will move on to twenty-seven A, which is, uh, approval for opening up. Um, of a public hearing to gather input on potential trustee area maps, this is our third public hearing on this topic. Um, may I get a motion to open the public hearing?
Aloud.
All right, open, uh, motion by member Smith, second by member Lynn. Um. Do we have any public comments? Oh, do I have to?
We, we have to vote.
Have to do the vote, I'm sorry. Um, all right, so preferential vote from student board member Lee?
Yes.
All right, um. Member Lynn?
Yes.
I'm a yes, member Sneed?
Yes.
Member Georgino?
Yes.
And member Smith?
Yes.
Okay, we are at eight fifty-three, opening of the public hearing. Do we have any public comments?
No, we don't.
Okay. Hearing none, I think I can move to any comments by the board at this point, right? The board can make comments at this point as well, if they have any. Any comments from the board? All right, so, yes?
Quick, I also think William and Scott are here to explain the process of selecting one of the scenarios. For the adoption during the resolution.
Okay, all right.
Sticking so.
Yes, do we have?
I think we should close the public hearing first and then.
Okay, all right, so then we will move on to twenty-seven B. Which is a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion and a second?
I'll, I'll move.
Okay, motion by member Georgino, second by member Lynn?
Yeah.
Is that number Lynn, okay, um. And. Let's go ahead and move to the vote, preferential vote from student board member Lee?
Yes.
Okay, um. Member Smith?
Yes.
I'm a yes, member Sneed?
Yes.
Member Georgino?
Yes.
And member Lynn?
Yes.
All right, so we are closing the public hearing at eight fifty-five with, by unanimous vote. And then, I think we're at item twenty-eight is where we have our visitors coming to talk, is that right? Okay, so we'll go on to mo- item number twenty-eight, adoption of resolution two-one. Two, two dash twenty-three, adopting trustee area boundary map. And election sequence for election of members of the Board of Education and submitting proposal to the County Committee on School District Organizations to establish. By trustee area elections, may I get a motion in a second?
We, we don't know what we're gonna move yet, though.
Um. I'm sorry, what was that?
We don't know what we're gonna move yet, so we should probably have them do the presentation.
Okay, do we, don't we have to get the motion in first, then the presentation?
Or no? You can do a presentation.
Okay.
No, no discussion.
Okay, let's go ahead and do the presentation.
Okay, good evening, I, I will start, um, I'm going to share my screen and, and William and I put a, a little dog and pony show together for you. And so, um, here we'll go. Uh, to start my PowerPoint. And, William, please, uh, go ahead and let me know when I need change.
Great, uh, good evening, everyone, uh, it's good to be back with you, William Tunic with DWK, I know that. Um, Scott has been, uh, guiding you through this process for the last few public hearings, but, um, as, as you kind of, you've seen from your agenda tonight is. Uh, the potential culmination of this process and transition. From at-large elections, which you, which the district currently uses to elect trustees, to by trustee area. Um, elections, and as, as Scott points out on the slide, and I'm sure he's, he's mentioned this, uh, at all the presentations. The process that's going on here, even though it involves drawing maps, look a little bit like what you might see sometimes with. Um, enrollment, that this process is not about school boundaries or school enrollment, what this process is about. Is developing trustee areas which are necessary, uh, for the board to transition from at-large elections, where all members of the public vote in every election. Uh, for all five board members, to by trustee area elections, where you have five trustee areas. Individuals, voters in each of those areas elect one member of the board who lives in that area. And they don't necessarily vote for the other four, they don't vote for the other four. Um, so that's the change that's happening here, and the reason for that is really compliance with the CBRA, which is the California Voting Rights Act. Um, as you know, districts and local agencies throughout the state have faced. Uh, challenges, attorney's fees, litigation over violations of the CBRA, which are not very difficult to allege. If a district or another local agency is using at-large elections, so we've seen. A large number of, of agencies, including in your area, make this change proactively, as you're doing, to avoid any type of liability attorney fees. So in making that transition, really what the nuts and bolts are, and this is the process you've been going through, is the development, development, excuse me, of trustee area boundaries. Um, a couple of basic requirements to do so, primarily that the population of each area, each trustee area is essentially equal. Again, this is total population based on census, not citizens, not voters, not students, total population. Uh, Scott's got the math there, it's about seventy-two hundred, uh, individuals per area is what we're aiming for, if we could be perfectly equal. Uh, because we have to use census blocks, um, you're never gonna hit that right on the nose, so what the courts have told us is you've got to be. Uh, within a ten percent variance between the most populous and least populous, so that basically means. The least populous, uh, trustee area shouldn't have less than seven hundred and twenty people, less than the most populous area, right, that's that ten percent. Um, so, we go on to the next slide, the other considerations we're looking at are complying with Federal Voting Rights Act, that mostly has to do with how. Um, ethnic or racial groups are either split or sort of, um. Uh, packed is the term that the courts have used into one area, we've been working with, uh, your demographer on that, so we're not concerned about that in this situation. Otherwise, the things we're looking at are, um, contiguous and compact trustee areas, again, though, that it. It, it sounds easy in, in concept, but when you realize that you're having to work with census blocks, those are the smallest sort of, most granular. Um, subdivisions we have to work with, they're not, they don't look like you would think they look, and I, Scott's probably showing you what some of them look like. Um, they're kind of funny shape, they can be really large, and so that makes some districts sometimes not look as contiguous or as compact, uh, as possible. The other thing that a board can, can look at is communities of interest, that could be a lot of different types of things, but it's basically groups of. Of individuals that sort of belong together, or it's the district that belong together. For school districts, one community of interest that I know, um, that schools look at, and I know you've looked at it, is, uh, attendance areas and locations of schools. And that's something that districts can either look to try to follow attendance boundaries, or in a lot of cases, and I think what you've been hearing a couple of your maps. Is actually look to split those attendance areas, so that board members. Um, either have one or multiple schools in their trustee area, or have, represent voters in multiple. Uh, attendance boundaries, so that no one school feels like they only have one trustee, or a trustee doesn't feel like they only have one school, so that's something that we see pretty common across. The state, and then the last factor too that we can look at is the location of incumbents, the idea being that we don't want to use. Uh, the districting process to essentially, uh, remove somebody from the board, while. The impact of the change does, uh, doesn't affect any current terms of board members, everybody remains on the board. Um, it can affect who can run for reelection, and we don't want to use that process. Um, to kind of take that choice away from voters if they want to reelect somebody, so those are all the different criteria. Um, that we can, we can look at, I know you've been talking about it, and so with that, I want to turn it, I think, over to Scott, and he's gonna talk, uh, about the three maps that have been developed. Uh, with these criteria.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Liam, um, yes, and I, and I developed three maps, scenario A, B, and C. Um, using those criteria, starting out mainly with, uh, concern with keeping the variance within that ten percent. Um, but I also looked at using other communities of interest and some of the local geography and boundaries to, to help guide some of the. Areas that we looked at, so this was tr- uh, trustee area one, A, scenario A, and in this one, I used, uh, the tenants areas. As maybe a guide, so like, for example, trustee area two is, is a single tenants area. Um, the trustee area one and three are splitting a single elementary school attendance area, and trustee area five were splitting. Trustee areas, uh, and the tenants area, um, so that effectively gave one or two. Board members, or each board member only had one or two schools mainly to, uh, in their areas. And also, I can have some concerns on this, is this was only got it down to a maximum variance of eight point four percent, which I always like to try to go smaller. Get it as close to that equal population as possible, as the laws, the codes say, and so I looked at some o- other different ways. So from there. I decided to keep things a little bit more contiguous, and it's kind of a, it's kind of difficult, a little bit in that northern portion of the district. Um, where there's some trustier, uh, where the census blocks are in that very, um, area that sticks up north of everything. Uh, there was, it was kind of hard to make sure which way that goes going, or which one this is, but. What, doing this, I was able to get not only the variance down to two point eight percent for trustee or for scenario B. But I was also able to give. Each trustee at least two areas, if not three. Attendance areas to be representing and have, represent the people from those areas. So it was, it was kind of the best of both worlds, they were able to represent multiple people, were able to get down that two point eight percent. And, um, we avoided some of the, uh, the issues of maybe having some trustees in the same area, going, looking in the same, um. Area for reelection down the road, and then I said, well, that went so well, I can see if I can tweak it a little bit more and get it even down lower. And this was, uh, trust, uh, scenario C. And scenario C, we've got a max variance of less than nine percent, or less than one percent, um, point nine to be exact. Um, most of them are within, uh, you very small amount of where those numbers should be, so with that, uh. Everything is, seems to work, this is, uh, within our guidelines, guidelines of the California Ed Code. Um, we've looked at all those criteria that, uh, William mentioned, and we've given it up to you. All to review and decide on one of those. But with that, there's a second portion that I'm gonna let William take care of.
Yeah, thanks, Scott, and I guess, I, I guess I stand corrected that I said usually you don't get almost dead on as far as equal population, because under one percent is, is pretty darn close. Um, so, yeah, this is the other piece of it that I wanted to talk about, and I'll explain, um, kind of what this chart's talking about, because it gets a little bit, it can, it can be a little bit confusing sometimes. What we're talking about here is election sequencing, and the reason we have to determine this and provide it as part of the proposal is because, as I meant, you know, obviously you have. Uh, in your district, you have two seats up in, uh, will be the twenty-two or twenty-six cycle. Um, and then you have three up in the twenty-four and eventually the twenty-eight cycle. And when you have at-large elections, two seats are up, three seats are up, whichever term is expiring, obviously those are the individuals, the seats that are up for election. When you go to trustee areas, you have to figure out which trustee area is gonna match up with which election cycle. Usually what we'll do when we look at this is, if, if every trustee, if all the incumbents are in separate trustee areas. The sequencing will just essentially follow the current trustees, so if you've got, again, if you have everybody in their own trustee area, we'll just assign the election sequence to match up with the incumbent trustees. Creates the least disruption on the board, um, and that's usually the pretty simple way to do it. Um, in a situation where you have multiple trustees in one area, and that does occur both, actually it occurs in all three scenarios, in scenario A, it occurs in both. Um, areas one and two, and then in B and C, it occur, it occurs in areas, uh, only in area one, B and C are essentially the same for sequencing. Um, when you have that happen, then it gets a little bit more complicated, because we have to look at what are the different options, and what are the. Kind of the purposes of the CBRA, and some different factors and demographics that might suggest one sequencing makes more sense than the other. So, for example, in scenario A, uh, well, I mentioned you have two trustees in that area one, which are, uh, trustee Sneed and Smith. Both of their terms, uh, expire in twenty twenty-four, so that's, again, makes logical sense there to, to set that for twenty-four. Uh, you only have one trustee in, uh, area four, that's trustee, uh, D'Dorio, um, and that, or her term expires in twenty-two, so again, that's a pretty easy. Um, assignment, so then the question is, what about areas two, three, and four, how do those get assigned, in this case? Um, both areas three and five would be essentially kind of open, they don't have a current trustee living in them. Um, usually, we like to have one of those open areas go sooner than later, so that there's a trustee there. Um, it's not left open essentially for, for until the twenty-four election. In this case, uh, area five has the higher, um, Asian citizen voting age population numbers, that's sort of the demographic numbers that this, the. Federal courts and the CBRA look at, or I should say, the federal voting rights looks at, when trying to kind of determine what the purpose of the CBRA and federal law is. So in that case, we recommend that area five actually go in twenty-two, that would leave area three. Um, in twenty-four, and area two also in twenty-four, uh, what that means, just to be clear about that, is it would mean that the, um, trustee Lynn, whose, uh, term expires in twenty-two. Um, would not be able to seek reelection area three, because that area wouldn't be up till, uh, till twenty twenty-four. So that is, then that will happen in this case, because the two trustees in that area have different term expiration dates essentially, but that would be our recommendation for scenario A. Um, in scenario B and C, as I mentioned, those are the same, pretty straightforward for areas two, three, and five, we just matched up that up with the, uh, terms of the incumbents. And then looking between areas one and four, um, again, suggesting that area four go in twenty twenty-two, to avoid having, um, that area essentially. Uh, without a trustee living in it until twenty-four. Um, so again, that would have an impact as far as the two trustees living in, in area one. Um, so I know that was a lot, I'm happy to answer any questions, but the short version is in all three scenarios, actually the recommended sequence is the same, that. Areas four and five, uh, would be up for election in twenty twenty-two, and areas one, two, and three would be up, uh, for election in twenty twenty-four, and every, and obviously every four years after that. Um, and again, it doesn't affect the terms of any cor- current board members, if all current board members stay on until their terms expire, and then when. Uh, those terms expire and the seat come up for election, that's when it turns over to the trustee area election. So, uh, with that, and I'm sure if there's questions, I'm happy to come back to that, but just if we can, we'll quickly kind of finish up on the process piece, and then if there's any questions, maybe we can do it at the end. Um, I think the next slide talks about, um, kind of where we are in the process and what's next, so. You know, as we mentioned, this has been a process the board has been working on for many months, uh, through a series of public meetings. You know, as we mentioned, this has been a process that Boyd has been working on for many months uh through a series of public meetings. I know you also discussed it. Um, at the this uh superintendent update recently as well. So you've gone through all the required public hearings. It's been posted on the district's website with all the different information, the presentations we've had, and as you can see here, you've gone through a lot of steps. That brings us to um the third and final map hearing tonight. And adoption of one of the maps, and that will be accomplished um by. Adoption of the resolution that you have on the agenda and the resolution is set up essentially for the board. To uh identify which of the three three scenarios, either A, B, or C it prefers, and then just identifying that as attachment A or exhibit A. To the resolution. So the motion uh we'd be looking for tonight would be a motion to approve. Uh, the resolution with. Scenario A, B, or C attached as exhibit A. That would be sufficient uh to move this forward. If the board makes, uh, the board adopts that motion this evening, then the next step will be bringing. Uh, the proposal to the LA County Committee on School District Organization. They're required to hold a hearing, either approve or deny. Um, the proposal, they generally speaking uh approve these. And the other thing that they'll be doing is they now have the authority to waive uh any sort of election requirement. Under the education code, so the district, it's in the resolution that we're asking for that, and we'd also anticipate that they would grant. That request as well. That's likely to happen in the next couple of months. The maps then go to the register of voters and get implemented for, or starting, I should say, in the November twenty twenty-two election. So. Um, with that, I guess unless Scott, if you've got anything else to add, I think maybe we'll see if there's any um questions from the board.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any questions from the board? Is, is there a way for me to be able to see the?
Hey, can you guys close?
Yeah, there we go. There we go. Thank you. Okay, so any questions from the board or comments? Miss, uh, Member Smith?
Yeah, um, thank you very much for the presentation. Uh, when I first saw this, I thought the attendance area. Map that you had, which would be scenario A, was the best. But after really looking at it for some time and looking at the different scenarios, it occurred to me that. We probably owed ourselves to make available, uh, make ourselves available to the widest range of voters that we can. And uh, so as I walked through that process, I ended up with, I think, first of all, B and C are very close. I held them up to the light. On paper on top of another and was pretty much exact, but um, I, my, I'll let somebody else make the the motion, but. I can very much support C or B in that order.
Anyone else have thoughts? Member Sneed?
Yeah, I, I agree with the Member Smith, um. Even though trustee area three does not have any school in that area. But we're not looking at that right now. We're looking at the voters. That. Is so low for that one. That's the lowest variant. I would say. That's why um. I looked at C first and then B also.
Can I just, can I respond to that? I, I, I. Well, you know, that's. You're right, there's no school in that area, but there are still residents who go to schools in that area. So the physical location of the school isn't that important. That's the conclusion I.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I, that's what I meant that. You know, we're looking at the voters, voting numbers, and that C has the lowest variant. Of any of the choices.
Yes. Any other comments? I have a comment. Um, I, I agree. I think um, when I looked at it, I felt like um, scenario C was the one. That was the most equitable for all the areas and in every way. You know. Just number of voters, the demographics, everything. So. I, I do have a preference for that one. Okay, so should we take it to um? A motion to adopt this resolution and then um. And. And enter. I, scenario C.
I'll make that.
I'll make the motion. No, okay. Go ahead, Matt.
Okay, Member Smith makes.
I'll second.
And Member Georgino is the second. Um, can I get a preferential vote from student board member? Yes?
Do we, do we have to say which scenario in terms of? Uh, one through five, as was recommended, that we um. Align those elections for those scenarios according to. Where the trustees. Shake out. I'm not, I'm not speaking very clearly, but.
The sequence thing.
Yeah, it, uh, yeah, I understand. It's actually, it's, the recommended uh sequencing is already incorporated into the resolution since it was the same with all three.
Oh, okay, okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Thanks for asking, Members Smith. All right, preferential vote from student board member Lee. Yes. Okay, um, Member Lynn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Member Georgino?
Yes.
Member Smith?
Yes.
And Member Sneed?
Yes.
All right, item number twenty-eight passes with the vote of five zero. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Good night. Um, we will move on to item number twenty-nine, receive and file twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one financial statement audit report. And I think Connie, you're going to talk to us about this?
Yeah.
We'll take a motion first. Can I get a motion in a second?
Good.
All right, Member Smith, motions.
I'll second.
Member Georgino seconds. Okay, let's go ahead and talk about it. Um, Connie, what do you have for us on this one?
Sure, um, board president, Ms. Espinosa, um, education code require the governing board of each school district. Shall review at a public meeting the annual auditor of the district. Um, financial statement for prior year, any odd exception identified in the audit and the recommendation of findings. Of any management letter issued by audit. And tonight I invite Alan Chu, he is the audit manager on our account. From Alibadi, and he will provide, um, he will present more detailed information regarding the audit, and then ask any questions from the board and the committee. Alan, here's yours takeaway. Thank you for being very patient with us.
No worries. Um, thank you, Connie, and thank you for, um, the board for having me tonight. Um. As Connie mentioned, I am, my name is Alan, so I'm the senior manager um with IBALE, which is an independent CPA firm. And I, my, my role of the audit is to oversee the audit and make sure, you know, we follow all our guidelines and. Our procedures are aligned with our requirements. With that being said, I have a presentation that I would like to share. Which is right here. So to give you, um, the board a brief introduction of what's being presented, um, our audit generally consists of three areas. Um, the first area is um. The financial statements audit, which also includes the internal controls and compliance. Um, second area is um an audit of federal awards. Generally, these are the federal programs that the district receives funding for, such as your title one, title two grants. And then finally, the third and last um area that we report on is state awards. Um, these um kind of refer to the state audit guide. Um, the state audit guide annually. Issues out uh requirements for us to um review and audit. Um, these areas um include things like attendance. Um. This, our twenty twenty-one was a little different, so instead of attendance, we did the business learning and review things like um. EPA um after school and before school programs. Then moving forward is what is, what is an audit. So, uh, not it is designed for us to provide reasonable assurance. On whether the financial statements are free or material statements, and the key word here is reasonable assurance. Which means that um, of course, we're not able to audit and review every single transaction. So then what we do is we do a risk assessment by. Um, understanding and reviewing the district's internal controls, and based on our assessment of the district's internal controls. Then we start um using a sample, sampling methodology to test the transactions within each of the district's financial statements.
Okay.
Okay, and then. One of the main pages is um that we have is summary of auditors' result, which can be found on page ninety of the audit report or. Page ninety-seven of the PDF. Here you will see the financial statement opinion. Um, for the financial statement opinion, we did uh issue an unmodified opinion, which is the highest. Opinion, meaning that we did not find any issues during our audit related to the final financial statements. And regarding internal controls, there were no material weaknesses or or significant deficiencies identified during our course of the audit. And then regarding our federal awards portion of the audit, um, there was also an unmodified opinion. And giving a little bit more detail what we did for the federal awards, um, this year we tested two major federal programs. Um, those major federal programs consisted of the education's stabilization funds. This um includes like your S R and year funding that district received this year, and also the coronavirus relief fund. And based on our um audit for those two federal programs tested, um, there are no material weaknesses identified or significant deficiencies identified. And please um also note that um our federal programs that we tested are based on a sampling approach. Um, as the district receives uh multiple federal programs, so we do a risk assessment and do a rotation of federal programs every year as we go. And our final um opinion is related to the state compliance requirements issued by the states. Um, our auditor's opinion was unmodified for all the programs. Um, there were also no management letter observations and no audit adjustments that were required as a result of our procedures. Oops. Little too fast.
Um, real quick, um, your presentation is not showing for us. Did you have something for us to be looking at?
Oh, yes. Oh, no. What's going on? Yes, let me. Check what's going on. Let's see. Share screen.
There we go.
There we go. I'm sorry.
All right, no worries.
It sounded really good.
Yes.
Yes, so um. On, on, close to my next, uh, close to the end of the slides, um, you will see. We're on this, you can see now on the schedule of financial trends, um, which is located on the page seventy-eight of the. Report, or you can find it on page eighty-three of the PDF. So the schedule of financial trends kind of tells the district, um, where the district is going, um, how it's been doing for the past three years. And also what's up future projections are. So based on, based on on the three-year trends, district added incurred operating surpluses in two of the past three years. The district projects a deficit, deficit spending in the twenty-one, twenty-two um year. And then also the district anticipates a decline of ADA for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. Uh, notable reserves is also projected to decrease in the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. That's it. Um, do you guys have any questions with the audit? Any, any questions about our processes or what we do? Any questions of the results that we had?
I thought it was very thorough.
Yeah.
I'm trying to make it short because I'm, I'm sure you guys don't want to hear me and talk about F audit methodology. It'll bore you guys.
Well, thank you for um.
I think Mike had a question.
Yeah. Go ahead, Miss.
No, I was just gonna say, can we um take down the slides? Sorry. It was short viewed, but it was, it was viewed very for a brief period, but we got it. All right, now I can see everybody. Okay, Dr. Lynn.
Well, uh, thank you, um, Alan. Thank you for this presentation. It, um, it's great to hear that we have no material findings. Um. Now. Would the, this audit, um, in terms of our credit rating, are we in pretty good standing, in your opinion?
Correct. Mm-hmm. The credit rating is of course, you know, is aligned with the other districts that I've seen, because I, I do, um. I've been with the firm for seven years and I audit probably around seventeen school dis- districts around California. And um your credit ratings are aligned with the other um districts that I've seen. Of course, that kind of helps with the district, when you guys, when the district wants to issue bonds.
Right, right. Now, now, did your firm do all auditing last year?
Correct, we did.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we will um take a vote unless there's more questions. All right. Let's go to preferential vote from student board member Lee.
Yes.
Okay, um, Member Smith?
Yes.
Member Lynn?
Yes.
Member Georgino?
Yes.
I'm a yes, and Member Sneed?
Yes.
All right, that um. Passes five zero, and we will move on to item number thirty. Receive and file twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one measure S financial and performance audit report. May I get a motion in a second?
I'm a.
So we had a, a motion from Member Georgino, a second from Member Sneed. And I think we have, do we have a description about this one as well?
Yes. Yeah, I think um Anna will continue to present, this is a major S financial and a performance audit, and it's a mainly for our bond. Um, a funding and a project, and auditor has a little bit different from a um financial pieces. So Ellen, take away. Thank you.
Yes, so um, to give you a little bit of background, a measure, a measure S audit that we do, um. Kind of works hand in hand with the district audit, since we do do a financial audit piece related to measure S. Which is usually the activity within the building fund. But not only do we do a financial audit with measure S, we also do what we call a performance audit, and we issue opinion on the performance. Um, regarding the expenses, making sure that they align with what the voters were voted for during, during, during the. During the ballots, on the ballots. And this time I do not have a presentation, so I will kind of use the audit report as a little. Um, guideline. So the audit report can be broken up into two pieces, as mentioned earlier. The first portion, which is located on page one of the audit, is the audit report related to the financial statements related to measure S. Um, just like the district's um financial audit, there were no adjustments, and there were. No issues that were noted during the financial piece of the audit. The second portion of the audit containing measure S relates to the performance audit. Um, here we are selecting a sample of expenses related to measure S to ensure that the expenses were expended. Align that aligns with the measure S ballots. During our course of the audit. We did find some discrepancies, which we were um, which was noted in the audit report. Because of these discrepancies, um, we were, we had to note it in the independent, our, our independent auditors' report, those discrepancies. And also um the recommendations to the district and how to move forward with the discrepancies that we noted. So based on our, our testing that we performed, we tested. One point two million dollars out of one point five million dollars of expenditures, which totals to approximately. Seventy-six percent of the total expenditures. Um, three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars was not expended in accordance with the bond project list approved by the voters. Which was noted in the audit report. I think that concludes my brief little analysis of the uh measure S audit. Did any of the board members have any questions?
Yes, Member Smith.
I, I asked the same question of Connie earlier. I, I asked the same question of Connie earlier today about the three hundred and thirty three thousand dollars and just to clarify, so that the way to correct that basically is to move money from. Developers fees or something like that back into the bond, correct?
Correct, it's to move money, just to move money back into the fund twenty months transfer.
And just for the public, those expenditures. They were things that. Could have been. Used, taken from like a general fund or some other fund. And it fits fine with it. It wasn't like it was some expenditure that made absolutely sense. Yeah, okay. All right. I think someone, was that member Georgino? Yes.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, did the oversight committee review those expenditures?
Not yet. Board member George, you know, we are planning to schedule after second interview report. We are required to, I'm the holding a committee and the bond oversight committee by before the end of March. So after my second interview report, I do plan and we are required to share the other report to the board oversight committee. And it just for additional explanation, I, I think as Aaron said that base, the. Auditor of measure S is strictly according to the bound ballot. So those kind of expenditure is a can, is a. Paid to the consultant who is working on the project. But unfortunately, this specific fee cannot spend on the bond fund. So, so there is a very restrictive regulation. So not in this specific cases, we need a high consultant to get to the state of funding. But a payment for consultant will not be able to pay the buy bond. So we have to find the money to pay the consultant. That, that's why. It, it is a little bit confusing. But you know, that's why the profession development is very important for cross board, including the business service department staff.
So there was a connection to the actual measure S. Project, it just, it's just, it's, it's not something we can pay for out of that.
That's right, okay.
Okay. All right, so we have the motion and the second, we have a motion from member Georgino, second from member Sneed. We can go to the vote, preferential vote from student board member Lee. Okay, I'm a yes. Member Lynn? Members Sneed? Member Georgino? And member Smith? All right, that passes five zero. We'll move on to item number thirty one. Approval of the grant agreement for no kid hungry school nutrition. May I get a motion in a second for this? Okay, member Smith motions. Member Sneed is second. And I know we've had this on our agenda, but Connie, is there anything you want to say about this one?
This is a procedure once the grant key approval, our award, they are requirement to enter into the paperwork. And I would like to inform the board that the funding come to the district. Depend on how quickly district sign agreement. So in order to get the money quickly, so the food service department can process, purchase equipment to serve our kids. So I already signed, but I feel like I do need the board, board approval to enter into agreement. So this is a ratification, but I always say the purpose is in order for the good, the district to get the money quickly.
Okay, great. Let's go ahead and go to the vote, preferential vote from student board member Lee. Okay, member Lynn?
Yes.
Member Smith? Member Georgino?
Yes.
I'm a yes and member Sneed? All right, that motion passes five zero and we move on to item number thirty two. Receipt and approval of proposal from Tycoon Materials for e-waste recycling. Connie, oh, no, I'm sorry, motion. Can I get a motion in a second?
I'm a.
All right. Motion from member Georgino.
Second, second.
Second from member Lynn. And any discussion Connie on this one?
I just want to show with the board that this company is, this specialty is in the e-waste recycle area. And over the years, our district wide equipment either obsolete or have reached their end of life. And continue keep them is a post potential risk for the employee injury. And we'll also make sure that we will have an extra space for employees working place. And we think that it is better we hire a company to take care of, and this company provide a various licenses and the certificate liability. The, the beauty is they will pay the district, the fee schedule is on the page twenty second. And also they will provide a free tracking, free packing material, free handed drive and destruction service, the free monthly quarter, annual, annual report. And my former district used that company after we do the sorrow research, so I recommend we use this company too.
Okay, great. Any questions for Connie? All right, let's move to the vote, preferential vote from student board member Lee.
Yes.
Member. Georgino?
Yes.
Member Smith?
Yes.
Member Lynn?
Yes.
Member Sneed?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. This motion passes five zero. We move on to item number thirty three, approval of demographics consulting services agreement with Davis Demographics. And can I get a motion in a second for this?
Make motion.
Okay, member Smith makes the motion, the second from member Georgino. And Connie, you're up for this one as well.
Yes, this demographic study is totally different from we just present. And there, the, as a part of the facility master plan. And the demographic study is a very important component. Because the demographic analyzed and enrollment forecast will be associated with the future facility need district wide. So our architect on the record for the facility master plan is LPA. And they provide us three companies they normally use for demographic study for the enrollment projection. And we send of our people of this three company. Based on the service company experience, expertise and all the costs increases. We feel that David, David demographic is a very strong company. And we will ask the board approve to enter into the service agreement with the company.
Okay, any questions for Connie? Yes, Donna.
I think this might be a typo, but it's. It says district has contracted. Three companies.
Oh, yeah, should be contacted. Yes, okay, thank you.
Want to make sure.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and move to the vote. Preferential vote for student board member Lee. Okay, member Lynn? I'm a yes, member Sneed? Member Smith? And member Georgino?
Yes.
All right, this motion passes by five zero and we move on to item number thirty four. Approval of South Bay Workforce Investment Board SB WIB contract. Can I get a motion in a second?
I'll move.
Donna? Motion by members Georgino. Second by member Lynn. Let's go ahead and go to the vote, member Georgino. Oh, sorry, preferential vote for student board member Lee. All right, member Georgino?
Yes.
I'm a yes, member Smith? Member Sneed? And member Lynn? Okay, this motion passes five zero. And we move on to human resource services, item number thirty five. Approval of TCA memorandum of understanding MOU in-person learning. And tomorrow you have, do you have anything on this one?
I'll just kind of combine almost all four. They expired in January, so it's just an extension of the current MOU that we had in place. We, there were very, very minimal changes, so things that were no longer in place, we took out. And then a few different things were added in regards to language, but they were very minimal, so on all four. And I do want to also point out that anytime that new mandate comes through. By the governor, state or local officials, those will always supersede what's on our MOU. So when we are writing this, the MOUs for all four, the leave wasn't in place. We did put some language in there. But given that the new leave came into place, the SB one fourteen, that will supersede the MOU. So I did want to point that out on all four.
Okay. Did I get, did I get a motion on this one? I did not, did I? I'm so sorry. Let's go ahead and get a motion and a second on this. All right, member Smith motions, member Georgino seconds. We got the explanation. I, I did have questions, but I want my fellow board members to be able to ask before I jump in. You probably have the same question. Member Smith?
It's actually a comment because this has come up before, but if you look through these contracts. The signature lines, there's, there's no titles in some cases and there's no names. And to give you an example, on the very first one, TCEA on page six. I, I, we know Kyla is the president of TCEA, but I can't make out her signature and it just says TCEA president. So in five years or ten years or whatever, if they ever have to look back, nobody will know who signed these things. It should be, did a lot of contracts when I was employed and these things should be very clearly identified. And so I would request that we do that, starting now and going forward.
Absolutely. Anyone else? So my comment is, when I, when I looked at the, all of the MOUs. Two of them on the classified side made it clear. A little bit clearer that, that masking outdoors was not a requirement. But in the TCEA MOU, it talks about. It, it says, you know, it's in the mutual interest of both parties to abide by and all these things, you know, the CDC, the CDE, all that. And then below that, it says the parties agree to the following, and then under that. Is where you see masking indoors and outdoors is required. And I think because we now have changed that for our community, that masking outdoors needs to be. Removed from that. That's just my thought. Because it's not explicit that we're just gonna apply, you know, the, the, the guidelines apply. And, you know, it doesn't really say that explicitly. In fact, it's, it kind of reads the opposite.
Yeah, and I think because the in-person and the virtual ones were done a little bit earlier than the other two, that's probably why those were left on. But by all means, we can do an amendment. But with the new mandate that came through with the masking of outdoors, that would supersede it anyhow. So we can certainly change that. I have to look through to find the line items on both of those. But I do know the in-person and the virtual ones we did earlier. We got those done and signed before the other two. But we can certainly do amendments on those. They're very easy.
I would say, if I may, you know, the county keeps on releasing a new version of appendix T one, you know, like every other day. I, I, I mean, if Tamara has to constantly make amendments, that's gonna keep her from doing her, her other, her real work. So I, I don't know. I mean, I, I think what Sam asked earlier covers it, that, you know, what the county says basically supersedes. I, I, but I understand what Melissa's saying. It's, it could create issues.
Yeah, and I think. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The amount of time that someone's gonna have to spend to make every amendment needed, every time there's a change in the appendix T one, that's gonna be whatever.
I was just gonna say, I, I didn't read anywhere in here that said it would supersede. I didn't read that, at least in this particular MOU, and I read it a few times. And then it made me think, it just said, again, it just said, it's in the mutual interest of both parties to abide by. The recommendations of the CDC, CD, DPH, CDE, you know, all of them. But it doesn't say anything about superseding. And then, then it goes into, the parties are agreeing to the following. And under that, it says masking indoors and outdoors with plus all the other stuff that they, they've agreed to. So that's why it's not as clear. The other two are different and the language is much more clear, like you, you're pretty clear that. You know, we're gonna abide by, you know, any changes or anything that come about with, with the guidelines. So, so I just, I, I think for the members of TCEA will not be clear and I just don't want there to be any ambiguity for them. About that particular piece. Because it's, 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 you know, it's a, a topic that a lot of people are interested in, in terms of the masking outside.
Yep, not a problem. I think just adding that one line to all of them will really help. And like Dr. Lynn said, so we don't have to continue to do amendments because they're always changing, you know. Before it was a lot more things coming through, now it's slowed down a little bit, but who knows? You know, that way, once we have that line in there, it's an assurance for all of our members that anytime something is released, we will, that will supersede the MOU.
Okay, yeah. Great, all right, so then we've got to vote on item number thirty five, can, unless there's any additional comments. Okay, preferential vote from student board member Lee?
Yes.
Okay. Member Smith?
Yes.
Member Georgino?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, I want to back up for a second. So we're approving this with the adjustment of. Of that additional line put in for this one.
And I, and I think for both, you said that they didn't have it right, the in-person and the virtual one?
The virtual one didn't have anything about masking. So, but, but the, the, but the changes, I think, yeah, the changes that, that, you know, county guidelines will supersede. I think we'll do that. And we're, right now, we're just talking about the in-person one right now, so I'm sorry. So do I, do I need to go back and do the motion over?
Well, President, I, I think it may be better to table this because this is negotiated as an MOU with. The TCA, with TCA, so maybe we, it's better to table this, have Tamara negotiate with TCA. And then have her bring it back. I mean, what we're approving. I don't know, that, that would be my recommendation.
We can certainly do that. That way, it's, it's clean and this isn't being approved because this is the one that's posted. So what we can do is table this. I can have it amended. We can work with our unions. Once it's signed, then I could put it at the next board meeting.
Yes, thank you, member Lynn, for that suggestion. I think that's a good one.
And can you clearly identify the signatory and their title too?
For sure.
So we need a motion to table it.
Okay, all right, let's go ahead and make a motion to table this one.
Can we just amend, can we just amend our motion, Matt?
Yeah, Matt, you have a live motion.
Yeah.
I guess so, yeah, yeah, absolutely we can. Yes, you're right.
Okay. So we're amending this motion.
I would like to amend the motion to table till the next meeting or set aside till the next meeting.
All right, it's been motioned by member Smith to table this. Do we have a second?
I was the second.
Donna was the second.
Okay. Oh, that's right, Donna, you're, you're, you're in agreement with the, the adjust. Okay, all right, so then we move on to the vote.
Okay.
Yep, we move on to the vote. Preferential vote from student board member Lee. Okay, member Smith? Member Georgino?
Yes.
I'm a yes, member Sneed? And member Lynn? All right, thank you, fellow board members for that. All right, we'll move on to, that passes five zero, so we will table that to the next time. Item number thirty six is approval of TCEA. Let me see what we are doing on time. We have ten minutes. And I think we are going to be going back to closed session. Do we need to make a motion to extend this meeting?
All right, to make the motion to extend this meeting for fifteen more minutes. After ten o'clock.
I think we need fifty or fifteen.
I think we need more.
Okay.
I think if we're, if, if closed session counts, then we're gonna need more, I think.
I would amend the, amend the motion to extend the meeting.
You didn't amend the motion, it wasn't seconded. Oh, yeah, okay, that's, thirty minutes?
Is that enough?
Um, I'm thinking, I mean, yeah, we can do that second. You wanna do? Donna, what were you gonna say?
I was gonna say, how about forty-five? Cause we still have several items we have to do here.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking too.
I'll second you. Charm.
Okay, so what do we have? We have a motion from member Lynn. Um, for forty-five minutes? And do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
All right, so motion from member Lynn, second from member Georgino. Um, all right, let's go ahead and go with the preferential vote from student board member Lee.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Member Smith?
Yes.
Member Sneed?
Yes.
And member Lynn?
Yes.
Okay, so
Member Georgino.
I didn't say Georgino? Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, member Georgino. All right, that motion passes five zero. So we will go um until, what time we at?
Ten forty-five.
Ten forty-five.
Ten forty, ten forty-five. Okay. All right, so let's go ahead and move on to item number thirty-six, approval of TCEA memorandum of understanding MOU for Virtual Academy. Is this one, we're gonna, are we gonna need to table this one too? Cause it doesn't have that statement in there? About um the, the guidelines as they changed, it supersedes.
I, I don't believe that this one has any language in there about um the COVID guidelines. Because they're virtual, they're, they're at home. So it wasn't inclusive of the language that the in-person documents had.
Yeah, yes, you are right. Okay. Can I get a motion and a second to approve this M- MOU?
I move.
Okay, member Sneed, motions, Lynn, member Lynn, seconds. Um, does anyone have any additional comments about the virtual um academy, the virtual academy MOU? For TCEA? Okay. All right, preferential vote from student board member Lee?
Yes.
Okay, um, member Sneed?
Yes.
Member Lynn?
Yes.
Member Smith?
Yes.
Member Georgino?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that motion passes five zero. We'll move on to item number thirty-seven, approval of CSCA one oh five memorandum of understanding. And can I get a motion in a second?
I move.
All right, member Smith, second by member Georgino. Um, were there any comments or questions about this MOU? Okay, we'll go to the vote, preferential vote from student board member Lee?
Yes.
Okay, I'm a yes, member Smith?
Yes.
Member Georgino?
Yes.
Member Sneed?
Yes.
And member Lynn?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes five zero. We are on to item number thirty-eight, approval of CSCA eight twenty-three memorandum of understanding. Uh, may I get a motion in a second?
I move.
Okay, member Sneed is the, got the motion? A second?
I'll second.
Second from um member Georgino. Um, any comments or questions about this one?
Very nice signature lines.
All right, can I go um get the preferential vote from student board member Lee?
Yes.
Yes, okay, member Lynn?
Yes.
Member Sneed?
Yes.
Member Georgino?
Yes.
Member Smith?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that motion passes five zero. We are on to consent agenda. Um, I think we're, I, I, I think we need to pull, um, can, I think we have to pull an item within number forty-six. So I don't know, how do we do this?
You would make a motion to pull it and postpone.
Just item forty-six E one.
Right.
Okay. All right, so, um, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to pull item number forty-six E one.
Are you pulling that for a separate vote or are you pulling it for a future meeting?
Pulling it for a future meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, can I get a motion? I, I motioned, do we have a second for E one?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to pull number forty-six E one for another meeting. Um, can I get, um, let's go to the vote. Do we? Or do we need to discuss?
No.
Okay, okay. So, um, student board member Lee?
Yes.
Okay, see, I don't have my little check of all the people for this particular thing, so I have to remember not to miss anybody. Okay, student board of member Lee. Yes, uh, I'm a yes. Uh, member Smith?
Yes.
Okay, member Georgino?
Yes.
Member Sneed?
Yes.
And member Lynn?
Yes.
Okay, so we will pull that. Um, and now we can go to consent agenda where we have routine items approved by one motion and one vote. Unless a member of the board or audience requests that any item be reviewed and voted upon separately. We already did that part, so can I get a motion and a second to um approve the consent agenda?
Okay, approve.
All right, we got motion from member Smith.
Second.
Second from member Lynn. Go to the vote, student board member Lee.
Can, can I ask a question then?
Sure.
On um, item forty-one, the third page back, it lists a contract for thirty-seven, thirty-three thousand seven hundred dollars for JJJ floor covering says proposal to demo existing flooring, furnish and install new vinyl tile at the new preschool site. I just didn't even know we were that far along. Are we really that far along?
So, we are. Can I answer?
Yes, please.
Oh, so, uh, yeah, we are. We've made significant progress um on the development of the preschool after the naming, which was the big unveiling in December. We then are working with Anthony Salazar with, and Connie on the construction efforts that need to happen to just reconfigure uh that, that old uh, what was the Douglas Zero site into the preschool site. And so we did um approve the architecture uh companies that will be doing the work and helping us out on that end. And then working with Anthony within the uh limitations and requirements of how much work our actual custodial team, M and O team uh can do. And so within the scope of their work, they are moving forward. And then where we do need um architecture or contracted services, we are moving forward with that. So uh we are well on our way uh to build the preschool, hence the superintendent's forum that's gonna outline some of those um the advancements and the work that has been put in. I just wanna thank, you know, Mickey and Connie for all of their work on that.
That's phenomenal.
Yeah, yes, that's great. Okay, um, we are now on to the vote for the consent agenda. Um, can I get the preferential vote from student board member Lee?
Yes.
Okay, um, member Georgino?
Yes.
Member Lynn?
Yes.
Member Sneed?
Yes.
I'm a yes, and member Smith?
Yes.
Yes, okay, that motion passes five zero. I wanna congratulate Mr. Salazar for his promotion. Um, we will move on to item forty-seven, board member comments. Any board member comments?
Just
Yes, uh, board member.
Uh, boys soccer and girls basketball are both playing on Saturday at Temple City High School. So everybody come out and watch.
Awesome. Yes.
I just have one comment. I just wanna let the public know how important it is that this evening, we are complying with the California Voting Rights Act. And we're able to establish the bipartisan areas um and chose scenario C. Um, it is very important that we are complying with that law.
Agreed. All right. We will move on to item number forty-eight, future agenda items. Uh, we have accelerated high school college policy, dual language immersion program and facilities master plan. Um, does anyone else have anything they wanna add? Okay, we'll move on to item number forty-nine, which is a digi- additional bu- public comment on agendized or non-agendized items. Do we have any additional public comments?
No.
Okay, so now I think we are moving back to closed session. Is that right? And I need a motion for that?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, let me make sure I miss anybody. Yay, okay, um, can I get a motion and a second to go back to closed session?
So moved.
Member Smith motions, second from member Lynn. Okay, oh, did I hear, was that you, member Lynn?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, and then on this one, because we're going to closed session, I, I think we don't get a pref- preferential vote from student board member Lee, is that right?
I would think not.
Okay. All right, um, so we'll go to the vote. Um, I'm a yes. Student, um, member Sneed?
Yes.
Member Smith?
Yes.
Member Georgino?
Yes.
And member Lynn?
Yes.
All right, with that, we have um of unanimous vote to go back to closed session. And so we will adjourn to closed session. If we could get back into a breakout room, Andy, that would be great.
Yeah.